The Governor's March 15th, 2020 orders posing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Credit Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting in the City Council will be conducted via remote participation. We'll post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the city of some of website and local cable access government channels. This special meeting of the City Council has been called by the mayor solely for the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2022 municipal and enterprise fund budgets with related appropriations, transfers and other financial items. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President, this is roll call, Councillor Niedergang.
Here.
Councillor White.
Yeah.
Councillor Ballantyne. Councillor Ballantyne. I don't record Councillor Ballantyne as being present, Councillor Ewan Kempin.
Here.
Councillor Davis.
Here.
Councillor Strezzo.
Present.
Councillor Klingon.
Present.
Councillor Mbah. Councillor Mbah. I don't record Councillor Mbah being present. Councillor Scott.
Uh, present.
Councillor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councillor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, nine councils are present, two are absent, we have a quorum.
All right, please read the first item, and Councillor Mbah says he's present, can you say, uh, vocalize that, Councillor Mbah?
Uh, John, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay.
Very good, ten councils are present, one is absent. We still have a quorum, and item number two on the agenda is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $270,088,117 to fund the fiscal year 22 general fund operating budget.
All right, we have the mayor and all appropriate staff here, uh, to discuss the fiscal year budget, seeing no objection to allowing the mayor to speak. Uh, I would ask for people to, uh, let them get through the presentation first and then ask all questions afterwards. More often than not, the questions you have will be answered in due course. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, welcome, and, uh, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, for your presence at the council, first we give a mic check, can you hear me okay, and then I'm gonna start sharing my screen.
You can hear me.
Great, thank you, and good evening, uh, to you and, uh, members of the council, uh, as well as the public. And, uh, one more time, Mr. President, you can see the shared screen presentation before I commence.
Well, you can see the presentation.
Thank you, well, again, good evening, uh, again to the City Council, and for the members of the public watching from home tonight and who may watch us later. Yeah, I'm honored to present the proposed FY22 budget, uh, which if it isn't now, will be live shortly sometime this evening at someovalma.gov/fy22budget. This is also, for me, is my last budget I'll be presenting as mayor in, in my 18 years and, uh, last in my 26 years of service having been a full member of the Board of Alderman. So, get to reminisce a little bit, but thank you, again, Mr. President, uh, to be, have the honor to present to you. Um, when we begin, uh, we begin the FY22 budget season certainly under markedly, um, different circumstances than last year. It's been a long, ruling, um, traumatic 14-plus months, uh, as a community, as a society, as administration, as elected bodies, dealing with COVID. It was only less, actually less than 12 months ago, um, that, when I presented the proposed FY21 budget. But to many of us, it feels like several years, I think we can agree on that, have passed since those early days of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still upon us. And I want to thank all of you on the council and everyone in the public for the work you've done to step up, help out our community, those in need, those most vulnerable, those suffering. It's been a true team effort, and it's important, as it's difficult to measure and take stock of what we've lost, we know we've lost 86 souls. Businesses were disrupted, some closed, people's lives certainly turned upside down, and we suffered through, again, immeasurable amount of, uh, emotional stress and strain because of the trauma, isolation, uncertainty in the situation. Last year, uh, we were certainly engulfed in uncertainty, more so than now, and uncertainty about the virus, the health and safety of our community, our residents, and businesses, and economic security, and the impacts really of COVID on our city government and administration. So, but I hope this slide will illustrate, and this is from my budget presentation last year, we really reflect that uncertainty. When we had proposed and developed the FY21 budget in the spring of 2020, as we recall, as we recall, many sectors of the economy and city operations were still largely shut down, and we had, you know, very little knowledge about the cost of the virus that we're taking in coming months, and, you know, when or how we would even reopen and how that would proceed. So, we made a very smart and elective decision to, uh, uh, project it significant revenue losses, as everyone was projecting, both the public and private sector, uh, across the economic spectrum. Thankfully, uh, we would learn later that state aid would be level funded, and that many of our other revenue sources would not be as negatively impacted as we projected. But not knowing any of this in June of 2020, uh, we recall we had the budget conservatively. So, uh, we made some tough but necessary decisions to reduce ordinary maintenance budgets, uh, in nearly every department. We've put on hold, as you recall, important projects and programs and services. We put a halt to all new investments, we froze hiring for vacant positions, eliminated annual salary increases for non-union staff. And, uh, we made the decision collectively to use over $5 million in free cash to fund the budget, and that was up from just over $1 million and in fiscal year 2020. I'm grateful, I'm sure you all are, that our financial outlook looks significantly better today. Certainly, and as I present to you the FY22 budget. Thanks to the resilience and the hard work of staff, elected officials and residents, the council's support of our aggressive agenda to support our community, a welcome, at a good degree, welcome change in leadership in Washington at the national level, President Biden's administration, in Congress, in COVID-19 vaccines. We have weathered, we have weathered the municipal, uh, public financial storm, and have come out stronger on the other end. Overall, uh, we're projecting a nearly 9% increase in revenue in this FY22 budget compared to the final Y21 budget. Now, this overwhelmingly positive financial outlook, it's not surprising, not when we consider our collective record, all of us as an administration, chief executive of that administration, as elected bodies, the legislative level boards of Alderman and council of the community, a record of strong financial management of the past almost 20 years, 18 years. New growth, um, both commercial and residential, which has climbed steadily since 2010, took off in FY19 and 20 and 21, as we recall. We had $10.3 million in new growth in FY21, 68% of which came from commercial growth. That's the largest percentage in recent history, and that is the result of a deliberate approach by all of us to reframing that paradigm, shifting the tax base ratio for the commercial sector, bringing the revenue revenues we envision, and some are vision to deliver the services this community deserves. And this trend, it's set to continue with 11 major commercial developments in the pipeline, four of which are already under construction, and 10, which include elaborate biotech component, and we had the opportunity, if not invite you, to read the recent, a few days ago, Boston Business Journal article of talking about the expansion of the life sciences biotech sector into Seminole, which really, as I submit, has been a saving race for that sector. This was done with our community vision, not by anyone else, and it's paying off. With the green line extension expected to come online by the end of this calendar year, we anticipate that new growth to continue along that corridor, even better. I'm optimistic, very optimistic, they're optimistic, we will get our green line extension contribution money we borrowed back, it's not final. But we are getting close in our conversations, negotiations, we hope to hear soon, which you can imagine and vision provide us even more financial flexibility as we move forward. Free cash, which is really a confusing term, there's nothing for me about cash, but free cash is really a reflection of strong financial management and budgetary oversight. Free cash also provides us flexibility and resiliency, especially in unexpected, uh, difficult financial circumstances. Free cash has also been growing steadily for the last decade. Again, the importance of free cash, if you would agree, was underscored over the last year, and when we used this funding source to support our community economic recovery, and we were prepared to use $5 million, as I mentioned a bit, to fund the FY21 budget in order to avoid layoffs and would have been painful service types to the community. After cash has grown, the other important parallel is our reliance on it as a funding source to offset structural deficits in the operating budget has decreased. We were fortunate that the financial circumstances in FY21 were not nearly as dire as we and others are projecting at budget time, and that this council passed a final budget, this is important, this council passed a final budget in December, that for the first time had no structural deficit and required no free cash as a funding source. And I don't say that lightly, the importance of that, that same is true for the budget proposal before you tonight in FY22. For the second year in a row, we will not use free cash to fund the operating budget. Reserves are also, as you all well know, the public understand, essential to our financial flexibility and resiliency. And we have grown our stabilization fund to over $44 million. That is also just doing. Reserves have also grown relative to the operating budget and are now over 15%. This is, by any outside observing expert, a critical indicator of financial health. As I, um, and I want to give a, I want to thank you all for, I mean, all the success is the product of everyone's collective will to set the highest standards in policy as fiduciary stores of the taxpayers' dollars and use them wisely, and it's paying off. But I have to share some, one story, and as I spoke to Councillor White, as he and I took office, just two years apart in the 90s. One, how, certainly the complexity, I'll talk about that, and the level of budgetary investment and growth has grown exponentially, all for the good. But really, um, to think about where we were in my, uh, as Alderman and our first budget to receive, but for me personally, in proposing my first budget as mayor, and I can't help but reflect on my first budget season as mayor in fiscal year 2005, FY05, and that was obviously June 2004. Back then, we had a multimillion dollar structural deficit and less than $200,000 in reserves. We had a Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund by name only, that Dan Alderman, White, myself, worked together to form and propose with the Board of Alderman, that we operationalized together with the Board of Alderman, and this council has carried that forward. And, and little did I know that a massive recession, anyway, was only a few years away in 2008, 2010. For me personally, it's one of my greatest achievements in my time as mayor, that we leave the next administration, the next mayor, wherever she or he may be, by financial circumstance, better financial circumstances that we inherited, but for all of us as legislators, having served on the Board of Alderman, and I understand the role of the watchdog of the city treasury, and all of us together, these were done collectively, with the policies we've got there to make the investments, the infrastructure, I'll touch upon that, to put a deliberate intention and focus and approach to growing the revenues, specifically new commercial revenue that has allowed us and put us in this important and advantageous, uh, position. So, I'll be giving you all a lot of shout out, but I do want to give a shout out to my long, many of you have served with what I served, almost the same amount of time with Dan Alderman White. And that we had a little laugh today, it was a lot different back then, as we were literally scratching coins or begging for coins to scratch together, that hopefully come up with something net positive. Our strong financial management that we've all had a role to play in has led to consistent improvements in our bond rating. Uh, just to pull out some comments from our most recent bond rating evaluation, Standard and Poor's assigned its AA+ long-term rating to Seminole, specifically citing our very strong economy, very strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, very weak debt and contingent liability profile, and strong institutional framework, which I'll speak about this in a little bit, about your collective collaboration, uh, over the years with this administration. In keeping with the bond rating increases, as we will, and I want the public to clarify for the public, our cost of borrowing has gone down even as we have borrowed more. So, we, um, if you don't know, we went out to borrow just two weeks ago and achieved, and Alderman, and Alderman, the council, White, now we're having another laugh about this, we achieved a remarkable 0.12%, 0.12% interest rate on our short-term bond anticipation, you know, it's in 1.97% interest rate. That's under 2% in our long-term bonds. But these remarkably low interest rates, as you can imagine, so the public understands, will allow us to continue our aggressive efforts to tackle legacy infrastructure needs for less money, like less cost. The taxpayers of Seminole have also directly benefited from our strong financial management in the bond rating. In October of 2020, if you recall, we borrowed a little over 130, 130.3 million to be exact for the new high school. The amount publicized in 2016 that would be under the debt exclusion. Now, the winning bid for that sale came in with an interest rate of just over 2.03% and an overall cost of over 30 years of, um, approximately $177 million. So, to put things in perspective, several years ago, many years ago, about 10, I believe, on the night the then Board of Alderman voted to place the high school debt exclusion question on the ballot, we presented in the administration to the Board of Alderman. A scenario, a scenario that assumed a 5% interest rate that produced approximately a $250 million overall cost. Compared to that scenario, the actual sale has saved this community, particularly the Seminole taxpayers, nearly $73 million, $73 million over the next 30 years. The fiscal year 22 budget presented to you tonight boldly embraces this positive financial outlook. It makes up for the new ground we lost in FY21 and commits critical new resources that I will describe in the following slides. Uh, before you is an appropriation request of approximately $270 million, a 9% increase over FY21, a 6.7% increase excluding debt service on the high school. The budget is $350,000 below the levy limit, includes only minor changes in fees and fines that will be, uh, will be discussed and presented to you on Monday. The FY22 budget includes a slate of new investments that ensure, and to, one, set up, set the city up for long-term operational success, and to build those are more equitable Seminole. Uh, this evening, I will provide a high-level overview of many of these investments. Department heads are not only ready and willing, but very eager and excited to engage with the council in a robust and detailed discussion of each of these proposals in their scheduled budget meetings. The work of the Seminole City Government, as we all know, has grown steadily, perhaps, more accurately, exponentially, in volume and complexity in recent years, reflecting the changing evolution and complexity of a community, and it shows no sign of slowing down. We continue also to face crises with no easy answers, whether they be housing affordability, climate change, systemic racial injustice, and the pandemic highlighted vulnerabilities and equities that we must, I think, go to react boldly and deliberately on to address now. At the same time, and I know you hear this, our residents are rightfully demanding more, they expect, and they deserve modern efficient services and resources. We have done the best we can, all of us, with the resources available, to meet those expectations. Without an infusion of resources, however, resources specifically to fill critical capacity gaps and to continue modernizing our governments or investing in strong financial management or addressing legacy infrastructure needs and investing in our staff, we absolutely risk falling short of those expectations. If the next mayor, administration, city council is to be able to carry on the legacy of Seminole being the best-run city in the Commonwealth, something we should all be proud of, that title, or that accolade, we must continue to invest in this organization's ability and capacity to meet that challenge. I need to pause here once again and just say thank you to the City Council. For all you have played in supporting the investments we have made together in this organization and actually leading and advocating for new investments. It's more than appreciated, it's had an impact, a positive impact, not just in the staff and administration, but in the community. There's been an honor, really, to partner with you and your predecessors to grow this organization over time thoughtfully and strategically. I know that this year, like every year, you will execute your duties responsibly and effectively, and you will give each of our requests careful consideration and continue, as I expect you to, to push us to do better, uh, for the residents of Seminole. Our first step is to build back better. So, as I discussed at the beginning of this presentation, we were faced with potentially devastating revenue shortfalls while developing the FY21 budget, and in response, we reduced again non-critical O1 spending, shifted costs to other funding sources where appropriate, eliminated salary increases for non-union staff, and halted nearly all new investments. So, this year's budget proposal recommits general fund resources to critical services and initiatives that were put on hold or perhaps were shifted to other funding sources in FY21, ensuring predictability and funding in service provision. It also reflects, uh, the 2% salary increase for non-union staff approved earlier this year. Once again, thank you to the City Council for its quick, and, yeah, and support and approval of that request. And finally, it reflects the mid-year staffing and resource requests approved by the City Council in March and April. As our financial outlook steadily improved through FY21, it became readily apparent that an investment in nine urgently needed positions was essential in order to meet growing community expectations, as well as keep critical city business moving forward. So, once again, thank you for the council, for your advocacy, for your leadership, and your support of those requests. As the volume and complexity of the city's work grows, um, critical capacity gaps that must be filled have, and I know you all know this, become glaringly obvious. So, for example, we need to address, um, with a larger, more sophisticated new, uh, West Ranch Library, we obviously recognize the need to hire two additional librarians to ensure they're properly staffed and operated. With the new zoning ordinance and the increasing development pressures across the city, we need a deputy director of planning and zoning to focus on optimizing our land use policies. And with the annual city budget growing steadily in size and complexity, as Councillor White and I reminisced, and many of you know very well, we need a new procurement manager to ensure that, to really ensure that departments can smoothly and efficiently obtain the resources they need not just to conduct their ordinary and everyday business and responsibilities. Seminole has long been a leader in modernizing government. I'm proud that we've all done this together. Uh, I'm proud that we're referred to as the best-run city in the Commonwealth, well before many of these changes took place, but because of our approach, I am proud that we, a few years back, are seen as one of the 15 most influential cities in the United States. A city, the only small-sized city in the list, the other cities, including the major cities in this country look to it in terms of how you deliver highly effective, high-standard operations and administration and being most innovative. But without new investments, we do risk falling behind. So, for example, a digital innovation officer in Semestat will help departments develop data tracking systems and digitize paper-based processes, as well as manage the city's open data program. A critical effort to convert to a citywide digital time and attention system will increase reporting efficiency and accuracy, and vast improvement oversight and analysis capabilities. And thanks again to mid-year City Council approval, a robust process is underway to modernize our charter. The Charter Review Committee, uh, formed by myself and President McLaughlin, has developed a budget that truly seeks to engage the community as deeply and as far as possible in this process, and ensure the best possible outcome for Seminole residents. Thanks again to this council's support, we have made significant and grown investments to address legacy, legacy infrastructure needs in Seminole. I had the honor of representing all of us in a virtual meeting of, uh, through, sponsored by Yale University, um, in terms, uh, with other municipal CEOs from around the country, speaking to how infrastructure, focus on those infrastructure investments has led to a positive impact in addressing many of the inequities in our community and other communities. Now, while most of these expenses are driven by the capital plan, critical investment in the operating budget, as we are well aware, are always needed, is needed as well. So, for example, a new asset management program in the, uh, infrastructure asset management division will work with operational departments like the DPW and Water and Sewer to adopt a data-driven asset management approach that incorporates both, you know, work order tracking and capital plan, planning components. The splitting of buildings and grounds in DPW into two separate divisions will allow for a better management and really provide the department the capacity it really needs to shift towards being even more proactive. And expanding the EPOX tree health and young tree training programs and PPE stuff will continue and just double down on the city's efforts to protect and grow our urban forest and tree canopy. But to continue the strong financial management that has yielded such impressive dividends for this city, we really need to continue investing in department-level and city-wide financial management as well. So, um, for example, finance and administration directors in the inspectional services division and for the police and fire departments will streamline processes and improve internal controls and increase financial accountability. Recognizing the growth in size and complexity of the city's operating capital budgets, the creation of a budget division within the finance department will improve fiscal transparency in reporting, budget development and management and, and capital planning. And while the budget process proposes investments in critically needed new positions, we, and I know you know this, and again, thank you for all your support, we just can't forget about the current staff. And I will tell you, the critical challenge for us as an administration committee moving forward is to continue to attract, much as you could attract talented, diverse candidates who have a passion for curiosity, the willingness to be abnormal, who are driving the transformative changes you see over the, along with the community and all of us over the past two decades. Every time someone who's so talented part of the team here moves on to another place, I'm always proud, and there's a saying that if you're not plucking your people, it means you don't have talent. This budget reflects, again, these individuals have kept this city running despite capacity gaps. And this budget reflects two new collective bargaining agreements for SPEA, FireLAM, um, actually 3, and E911. It proposes a 4% increase for non-union staff, many, as you know, whom took on additional roles and duties over the last year just to keep normal city operations running while also standing up a separate operation, the city's COVID-19 emergency response. Their work was selfless, unheralded, and inspirational. Their work was selfless, unheralded and inspirational. This budget reclassifies several non-union positions whose job responsibilities have permanently changed since the last salary study. And it proposes a new comprehensive, non-union salary study that really reexamines, as we should always do, to make sure we're standing ahead of the market, but reexamines the classifications and new salaries in line of what the market plays. So that's never a variable that puts us on the short end of the recruiting retention scale. Finally, this budget makes a significant investment to prepare this administration, this organization, this community for its first change in leadership in 18 years. I can tell you, I have pretty relevant experience here since the last transition involved my administration. And it took over a period of roughly maybe 45 days. I promise you, if we don't put our effort into this, the next administration, its council will have a very difficult time. I understand my role in this and I want to make you proud in this effort and put all I have along with you to make sure the next administration, next mayor, wherever she or he may be, is even more successful than what we built together in the last 20 years. You've heard me say this multiple times in this presentation. I'll say it again and again. But the scale and complexity of the work we do today has changed. If it's changed 10 times in the last 30 years, it's been nine in the last 18. I promise you that. Surely it's significantly compared to when I took office in 2004. And this trend shows no signs of slowing down. It really would be irresponsible not to invest the resources today in order to set up the next mayor, their administration and, and the next set of elected officials for success. So I'd say the start, this could evolve at the start, we know at a minimum this budget should and does propose two, two full-time positions for the incoming mayor for the nine weeks at the end of the calendar year, so sometime between the final election and calendar year. A robust transition project to thoroughly document the work, the lessons, to provide a context, information, analysis and to trajectory this organization. There's not be an effort where we put binders of papers over the counter, but to engage the community, the bodies of government, the next administration, to provide the greatest opportunity for a smooth and accelerated transition, seamless as well. It provides for training for newly elected officials, city council and school committee, newly hired department heads. It relaunches, which was a very successful pilot program, the Somerville Academy for Innovative Leadership Sale, which really, and to embed this in the community, we'll go into details as we move forward, the teaching of what adaptive leadership is, so many of our challenges are not technical, where we know we can just provide a very straightforward, linear solution, but will require the cultivation and aligning of allies and stakeholders at every level of this community, whether you're elected official, volunteer activist, just live in the community, love it, whoever, to take on challenges of today and the unknown challenges of tomorrow. We need to commit ourselves to be not just a learning organization, but a learning community. But this is a program designed to broaden, deepen the pool of Somerville residents who dedicate themselves against you adaptive leadership and accomplishing shared community goals with a sense of purpose and vision and passion. All of the investments I have just spoke to about or discussed are critical, ensuring the administration, this organization can keep pace with the growing scale and complexity of the city's work and with our residents' expectation. I think you'd agree with me in this statement. I'm sure you will. But this organization, this city, will not succeed if racial and social inequities persist in our community. And I hope we learn a lot from the last 14 months as a society and not just as government. We know this, that the pandemic is putting a glaring spotlight on the inequities of the whole system. I know all of you, as representatives of this community, knew that all too well, and are strong champions and advocates of that. In the FY21 budget, FY21 budget, thanks to the support of this council, we made together a serious commitment to advancing racial and social justice and advancing equity in spite of the difficult financial circumstances and just uncertainties we faced at the time. In addition to new investments in housing and the Office of Housing Stability, helping human services and the public schools. If you recall, to remind the public, the FY21 budget created a new position, the Director of Racial and Social Justice. We embarked on an inclusive community-based hiring process. Again, including members of the community as well as representation, city council, the school committee, the mayor's office. And a recommendation was made to me, which I supported, and we hired Ms. Denise Molina-Capas to fill this position in March. And she's already had a profound impact on this organization and some of the community. In the FY22 budget, I submit we are doubling down on our commitment to advancing racial and social justice. First and foremost, what we are proposing is to formally launch the Racial and Social Justice Office under Director Denise Molina-Capas. Now Denise has spent the last few months developing the plan for the RSJ office shown or illustrated on this slide, drawing on the priorities for the office established in the FY21 budget process as well as conversations with staff and the organization that currently work on racial and social justice issues, initial conversations with community members, as well as her own deep perspective, expertise in advancing equity practice and her experience leading and advising nonprofit organizations. I know Denise is excited to discuss this proposal more in more depth with all of you in the council and the community on Monday evening. But our work obviously doesn't stop there. We also propose an additional $700,000 of investments in other departments and divisions in the organization that support citywide equity work, including, for example, launching the 2000 home programs, the bold, which is the bold next iteration of the 100 Homes program, expanding the Office of Housing Stability, creating a new position in the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, which is designed to integrate inequity focus in all of that department's work, creating a senior planner in economic development that is focused on support for women and minority-owned businesses, creating a community engagement specialist in the Office of Sustainability and Environment to, and support enhanced equity-focused projects on climate change resilience and underserved and vulnerable neighborhoods in our communities. Also creating a youth and family resource navigator in Summer Promise, which is focused on increasing equitable access to resources for families with young children. This budget, however, also proposes an additional full-time Spanish community engagement specialist in the Somerville Office of Immigrant Affairs or SOYA. But no, I want to make this clear that I do intend to submit a media request to the council for additional resources for SOYA. Once a new director is hired and has developed a full business plan, much like we've done for OHS and the RSJ office, a full business plan for the office aimed at meeting the growing demand for the services offered by, really, to the community by incredible SOYA staff. This budget will also proposes $1.6 million in new equity investments for our public schools, which you'll hear about from Superintendent Skipper and her team this evening. But I just want to make a particular note, the school department budget includes, because this has been a community goal, $500,000 in funding for free public transit access for our students. Really, a remarkable investment that will not only improve access to education and job opportunities for our students, but also, it also lays the groundwork for reaching our ultimate goal of making public transit access free for all Somerville residents and also a critical step to achieving our Somerville climate forward goals. Now, although it's not part of the operating budget, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA is an important part of tonight's discussion. Like other communities across the country, Somerville will receive an historic and enormous infusion of financial resources in the coming years as a result of ARPA. I say historic as in my memory. I don't know anyone else who has memory, never seen such a direct investment, direct to municipalities that we've advocated across many fronts, whether it be transportation, whether it was during the Great Recession. This is a monumental time. We need to deliver. And now, thank you, the city council has already accepted the first allotment of approximately $31 million in May. And this funding source represents, again, an incredible opportunity for every community, but certainly it allows to invest in social, economic and organizational recovery from COVID-19, to also further invest in a more equitable Somerville. We already have obviously some initial ideas for how to use the money. And these are longstanding issues of advocacy to bridge the divide of equity in the community, but whether it be bridging the digital divide, investing in childcare and early education, providing additional housing assistance, supporting our businesses and increasing our investments in arts and culture. But the historic scale, which I submitted this funding source, also presents a challenge. It is unique and historic, as I mentioned earlier, for reasons I stated. The challenge is really how to responsibly spend this funding in a planned, full and community-driven way that optimizes the use of this incredible resource. I chaired the Metropolitan Mayor's Commission, I mean Coalition, which is the 15 communities in the inner core of Boston. I'm the head of the Mass Mayor's Association twice, I'm board of directors, nationally the cities. And from the beginning of COVID, along with Kendrisco from the Maricel, co-chaired a statewide coalition. I can tell you, we understand the historic meaning, the gravity of this moment to do this right, and we need to deliver. We have already begun the planning work for ARPA that will kick off with an expansive community process. We will also intend to hire two position using those funds to oversee this important resource, both the director and a specialist. And we're going to work collaboratively with this council to keep informed, up-to-date as this work progresses. This is important. Other communities are looking to us because, as I mentioned earlier, we have seemed to set, we have set the standard over the years and have been influential in how to approach these challenges. And we'll be sharing and collaborating with our regional partners and other municipalities on how to approach this and, and, and collect data and, and narrate the progress. Because it's an opportunity we want to see repeat itself in the future for cities across the country. Well, I'd submit have a better sense of how to manage your resources rather than coming through some other bureaucratic board at a state level. In the meantime, we are planning for what comes after ARPA and for how we sustain the critical investments in the community that ARPA will allow. Now, we have begun work on advancing reinvestment in our community for ARC, which will, as we advance plans, come to the city council and ask for your assistance in that collaboration. That's, to describe it shortly, as I mentioned in my midterm, is an initiative that will leverage the incredible new growth, intends to leverage incredible growth of our city to invest in our human infrastructure, our residents and resident-owned businesses. We hope that ARC will define a permanent financing structure so as to fund so many of the goals that advance social progress, that could advance social progress to levels we never imagined. This script and programs, again, and also to make sure that one economic cross bearing of Somerville crosses all and affects all, and it's a tide that lifts all boats. We made incredible investments over the years in our bricks and mortar infrastructure, but it's the human, the people infrastructure, if you could agree, that we have an opportunity to really impact in a dramatic way. And if we can't invest there for a better life for people in this community, then the economy we want to achieve here will not be achievable. And I look forward to having that conversation with you. But just in ending this presentation, I thank you for the time and consideration you will give to this budget, you didn't give to me tonight, but you will give to this budget and respect the role you play, but as well as the proposed, intentional given proposed investments in it. Thank you also, I want to say, all those here, they're all tuned in to the department heads and staff of this incredible organization. You kept this city running under extraordinary difficult circumstances over the past year. You helped sustain me in many difficult days, not to mention the impact you had on people's lives in our neighborhoods. You've established clear visions for how to improve service delivery in the departments, and you have honestly and openly requested the resources you need to make those visions a reality. I know you are all ready to, willing to engage in a robust discussion with the council on each of your proposals. I want to thank all of you and the staff, but once again, Mr. President, thank you to you, every member of the city council and the public. I'm here to answer any questions tonight. As I mentioned, the department heads and representatives of those departments are looking forward to detailed conversation. And the finance team and others are here to answer any other questions they have in the budget. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do have a few comments already. I have Councilor Rosetti and then Councilor Ba.
Mr. President, thank you through you to his honor the mayor. Thank you very much for your years of service. This is not your last meeting with us, I know, but it is your last budget presentation. There's so much more I want to say, Joe, but I'm just going to leave it at, thank you. Because I serve on the finance committee, I'm going to keep my questions limited as fast as possible, but I want to make sure I understood some of your opening remarks. I thought the way I interpreted the slides on what was said was that for the current fiscal year we're in now, fiscal year 21, we did use 5 million of free cash because of the difficult situation we were in at this time last year in the unknowns. But on a further slide, it was suggested that there was no free cash used for fiscal year 21. So can you clarify if I misunderstood something?
No, I'm sure. Let me clarify. You're on the right track. The council collectively made the decision to invest an additional $5 million above the $1 million because initially the budget, we were looking at much worse projections than we realized. And we're happy to see as the fiscal year dawned that state aid was not cut. And by the time we got to December, the council passed a budget that we didn't have to use that free cash. We had a program, remember, we went, we went slow in many other communities. We passed a very conservative budget, took some steps of austerity and decided to plug free cash rather than go through service cuts layoffs. If you recall, we didn't lay anyone off here in the city. And, but we did not have to utilize that free cash. So that's what happened.
Okay. So does Ed, he must have a sense of, Ed Bean, of where we are, what's the anticipated, I know one of the slides referenced the anticipated undesignated fund balance. I think it was about 17 mil if I read the slide correctly for the end of this year and to next. But I'm wondering if that number represents funds that will be unencumbered and not spent at all. Do you have a projection, Mr. Bean?
Through you, through the man, through Councilor, President McLaughlin. I know, Councilor Rosetti, we won't be able to determine that number until the fiscal year closes. And it's a process that goes through the month of July, where we close encumbrances with the various departments and our final revenue estimates. And that will determine what our undesigned fund balance is. But all signs are pointing to another budget surplus this, at the end of this fiscal year. So I'm expecting that we'll see very similar results. I'm sure that we'll, our free cash allocation will probably exceed 10 million again, but I'm reluctant to, you know, put a number on that till we actually close the fiscal year. So that's, that's a process that goes through the end of July. And then we submit our balance sheet to the Department of Revenue. It's they, the Department of Revenue determines what our free cash is after examining all of our numbers.
If I may continue, Mr. President, through you. Thank you, Mr. Bean. I understand all that, that might have been a good explanation for the public to understand. But one of the slides that the mayor just presented to us did represent potential of 17 mil for fiscal year 22, the way I read that slide. So that's what your estimated, guesstimated projection is right now?
Through you, Mr. President. No, I think that, that slide is referring, free cash certification here in this fiscal year was 16.7 million. So I think that's, that's what that slide is referring to, is this year's allocation. So we will be coming back to you. Before June 30th and probably at the meeting on the 10th, we will be submitting appropriations to a portion out the remaining free cash to various reserve accounts and any remaining deficits, but they are few in this fiscal year. And putting it to reserves for the importance reserve situations such as salary and wage stabilization, the high school project, other, other, other projects. So we're determining what that amount's going to be and we'll be putting forward appropriations to you at the meeting on June 10.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. President, may I ask one other question?
Please do.
Thank you, through you, to his honor, the mayor. So the overall increase of this request of budget before us, if I remember correctly, is an increase of 9%. And my, that instinct when I saw that number was I cringed, and I'll tell you why. Because it's no surprise to you and your staff that, you know, in our discussions with the Water and Sewer Department over the new raids, it was, it was a very difficult, quite a few meetings, and we ended up hopefully adjusting it by a million, although we haven't voted that yet, but even though we may be adjusting it by a million to help our taxpayers, that's still really not going to be a huge help to our taxpayers. And myself and some of my colleagues, that concern because as Mr. Bean has reminded us, this will be the year, this coming fall, late fall, when our homeowners get their real estate tax bills and they come and notice the pain, the crunch, the financial crunch.
Please mute your microphones if you're not speaking, please.
Thank you. So what I think when we look at this budget presentation, we're going up 9%. The taxpayers are on because the tax bill go up based on our operation budget, based on what, however we wrote this budget. And then it's going to go up because of the high school project. And we're also taking in 60, 70 million from the federal government. And I, I respect your plan of, you know, getting together with Kim and others, of the mayor from Salem and others. But I also hoped that some of those federal fundings, monies could be used to help with our taxpaying citizens this year and next year as well, projections. Because people are still hurting from COVID, and hopefully next winter won't be a repeat of last winter that we all went through, but the federal government's been trying to help individually families by sending them a check every now and then. But to, my gut is telling me to, to agree to a 9% increase when we're going to be getting 60, 70, 80 million dollars from the federal government, and we're also going to be paying for the high school project more so this year, beginning this year, for the next 20 something years. That's where my mind is at, and I just wanted to let you all know, and I thank you, Mr. President, for letting me ramble.
Thank you, Councilor Rosetti, and please let the record show that Councilor Ballantyne is in attendance. Mr. Mayor, did you want to comment on that, or did you want to comment there, Councilor Rosetti? I guess, no. I don't think we, I'm not sure if you're unmuted, Mr. Mayor.
I'm okay. I didn't know if those were requests. I had to switch to a headset so you wouldn't get any feedback. I apologize, so.
Oh, thank you. Did you want, did you want to comment there, Councilor Rosetti, or were you just making your statement?
Well, I, I thank you, Mr. President, through you to the mayor. I really am just venting and letting you know what my gut reaction is to this sizable increase. And as I said, based on the federal monies coming in and the high school project and the water and sewer going up a good percentage, I'm not comfortable agreeing to a 9%. We have a lot of meetings ahead of us. I serve on finance, so we'll be diving deeper. That's my gut reaction to tonight's presentation.
Through you, Mr. President, I appreciate that, respect the council's role. And we'll be, we are more than well prepared to, and departments had to justify the investments I'd submit. As I alluded to in the conversation, I'm fully aware about, you know, impact on the tax rate, but I would say the hardest thing to tell people is they're not getting the services or the taxes they're paying. You know, we as, I think you all know this because you've all been advocating, leading the way, and I appreciate that. And that's been a big help to make sure we invest in the organization and back in the community. But we look forward to having that conversation and laying out all the data in terms of our position.
Thank you. We have Councilor Ba and then Councilor Youngkappen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Mayor, good to see you. Thank you for the stimulating presentation. It was quite a lot of information. I just want to, I have a question, just like Councilor Rosetti, I sit on finance, so I would take a deep dive when, you know, before us, I have questions which I will not ask here because this is not a forum, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for your leadership throughout the pandemic. I think a lot of what you guys do is kind of like a timeless job, and so I just want to express my gratitude for all the work that you've been doing. Thank you.
Well, Mr. President, I may thank you, Councilor Ba, and to the whole council. Whenever we needed a resource, a community, you just didn't respond. You're actually all leading it, and I also know you're out there on the, on the ground helping people with their needs. So appreciate everyone's leadership. We couldn't have done it without everyone, the council and the community, obviously, and the staff.
And through you, Mr. President, can I make one last comment?
All right.
Sure. And I also appreciate your last, but one slide, I really admire people who take pride in investing in their staff. So I just want to, you know, like commend you for the last two slides. That was, you know, everything was kind of stimulating, but you know, the last but one slide piqued my interest, you know, it's good to do everything to retain and keep great staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Youngkappen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of your staff and the department heads. I, I know we're, we're going to have plenty of time to ask a lot of questions, but I just have a really basic question that I, I don't think I understand around the $60 million that we're getting from the federal government. And I wonder if you or Mr. Bean can just talk a little bit about, is that money reflected in this year's budget? Or is that money that the administration is still coming up with ideas on how to spend it? And also just, I'll, I'll say my, my own thought. I have clearly enormous respect for, for my colleague at large, Councilor Rosetti, who raised her concerns about this money. I'll just say, from, from my standpoint, I want to see that money go out the door to, to improve the communities. On the list of priorities, I have, you know, a, a very, very small tax decrease on people who own property in Somerville would, would not be high on my priority list. So I'm much more interested in this going out into projects that, you know, people in Ward 3 have been hoping for and demanding for many years. And I just wonder if you could speak a little bit to how, how that money plays into this year's budget and, and future capital spending, et cetera. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, I'll start off, and Ed Bean only wants to chime in. No, it's not reflected in this budget. I did mention the two staff positions that will be paid out of those funds because we want to have the capacity to manage those monies appropriately, and we want to engage in a very robust community process. I did make mention of some priority areas which aren't just mine. We, we know those just being part of this community. We are looking at some possibilities. What I don't, I will not support, I made it clear, is just backfunding revenue losses to the city with Opera. I want that out the door. I want an impact in people. And we want to be thoughtful about how we target and leverage this money against other funding to help individuals, families, those impacted the greatest, who got sick at the highest rates, who died at the highest rates, businesses. Again, you know, one interesting statistic I was told was we lost nine businesses, nine restaurants, excuse me, if I have my statistics correct, during the pandemic so far, two which were already on the verge before. I would say nine out of over 260, I believe. If I do my math off the top of my head, what's that 4%? I'll leave it to you, Councilor Youngkappen, because you're the scientist here. But that's relatively, that doesn't mean that industry is not stressed or strained. And there are, you know, so we want to be targeted to how you use that money, but we have an impact, so. I, I'm not relying, I'm not going to support relying Opera money to help operations to lower people's tax rates. I want to deliver the services and I respect the impact the taxpayers, but the, I would argue and submit, there's not one position here, and I know probably more the council asked one than unjustified that we shouldn't be doing. So there are none of those money to use to create this budget. We refer it to two positions that we paid out of Opera. We're going to keep the council informed. I talked about the process and the consultation we're engaging. Maybe I can speak to that, or Emily or Mike briefly, so you know, the community understands how we're going to analyze, propose to use, will be multiple allotments. Right now, it's 30, about 31 or each year for about two years. And we don't know where, Middlesex County also gets allotment dispersed by some formula to municipalities, may get a little boost from there as well. But we usually, I'm with you, we're going to get that out the door to the people that need it most.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? And I have Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to diving into this in depth with the members of the Finance Committee. I also look forward to the presentation from the School Department shortly. But we, we did just receive this presentation about a half hour before the meeting and the budget document. It's not really a PDF, but the budget document just went live a few minutes after this meeting started. I know that Mr. Mashaboni is working very hard to get the portal up in a usable fashion. So the entire council has a grand deal of homework to do over the weekend, and I'm sure my colleagues will do our best to prepare for Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? And we have Council Davis. You're muted.
Can I work? Can you hear me now?
You can hear you.
Okay, excellent. So thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that presentation. And, and absolutely want to just echo the, the acknowledgement to the staff. This past year, folks have really just gone out of their way to, to keep the city running, and I have such incredible respect and gratitude for, for every member of the staff, for all the work that they all, they all have done, and that bears repeating. So I want to make the point of saying that. Two quick points and a question. The, I'm glad to see new positions. As you know, I have been among the many that have asked for and have decried the, the lack of capacity or the challenges we have with capacity and enforcement of various things across the city. So I'm, I'm happy to see new positions. At quick glance, they, they appear to be, you know, targeted in the right areas, although I, you know, I will certainly want to take a closer look. As, as Council Scott said, we really haven't had a chance to, any time to, to digest much of this prior to tonight, but we've got the rest of June to do that. But since I don't sit on the committee, I, the Senate Committee, and since you are here tonight, I wanted to ask one question, and I will acknowledge that this is based on information that was provided to me by someone that I, I haven't been able to look at the numbers, but I was, and, and so let me start by saying, thank you for recognizing the need for and including in the budget full-time staff, certain full-time staff for the city council. I, I expect that that will be a great benefit to, to both the council, the public and the administration. You know, I think we saw through the, the inter, the part-time folks that we had over the past several months that we can, we can make a lot of progress, work together with the administration, but also keep, keep things off the dockets of, of folks within the administration, and, and that worked out well. As we made a lot of progress towards advancing our, our understanding of where we are as a community in terms of having civilian oversight of the police department. And so thank you for recognizing that that, that worked out well enough and having a full-time position. I think some of the challenges we had there will, will by, by the nature of having full-time positions be addressed. So I'm really looking forward to filling those and, and keeping up with that important work and all the other work that those folks will help us do. And so we just deepen the, the collaboration between the, the council and the administration, because, you know, any good government needs both friction and, and collaboration in order for it to work well. And I, I think we're, we just keep improving that. The one thing that I was, and again, I haven't looked at the numbers, so please correct me if, if I'm, if I'm off, but my, I had been under the understanding that part of the budget that we would see would be a modest amount of funding for the council to engage, to sort of have on, on retainer, or at least sort of have at the ready an outside council if we had questions, if we had something that we had wanted to, to ask the council that was not the, you know, the solicitor's office, where there is a, a conflict between the executive branch and the legislative branch, which there is naturally in government. And I know that there is, there is some money in there. I, I'm told that it is, it appears to be allocated towards things that we already are paying for. And, and, and maybe isn't, it isn't what we had been, what the conversations had. So let me ask you, is there in this budget money for, you know, if the council, which under the ordinances that exist, has a question for an outside lawyer that we want to ask because we feel there's a conflict? Is the money in the budget for that? And if not, why not?
Matt?
Through you. I'm sorry, can you hear me okay, Mr. President?
I can hear you.
Yeah, through you, we did put money for the council. I haven't got it in front of me. I believe it's 25,000. But I'll check on the number. I just, there is money in there. We go through the details. So we did put that in. I just didn't put it in my presentation. I do want to recognize that I was laughing. I'm sorry, not away asking me, but it's typically the council advocating, I want the staff to know this for more staff and capacity, because there's empathy for the work your staff does. And me begging the council, will you hire yourself some staff, please, you need it. And I'm glad you got one. I'd submit you're going to need more in years to come. So I'm glad we're able to bridge that divide a little bit. But there is money, and I just don't have it in front of me. I know that to be the case on outside council.
Okay. And to be clear, is, is it your intent then that that money would be, be able to be used at the discretion of the council? If we have a question about, you know, whatever the issue may be, because of a conflict, obviously, that's what's where that situation would arise. Otherwise, the charter clearly indicates that the solicitor is the, is the counsel for the city. But whether there's a conflict, is it, is the intent that that money would be, be able to be used at the, at the city council's discretion?
In short, yes, but I want to make clear, as I said, consistently defining what the conflict is is important, that we're working collaboratively, and I have with the president, that we'll work together. But we felt it was important recognizing, you know, we recognized that need and respecting, supported it, put the money in. And those, some details may have to be worked out, but I have no doubt we'll figure that out.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I think, you know, my, my, as you know, my, my thought is the 25,000 is probably a little on the low side, maybe significantly on the low side. But if that's, if that's what it is, and it's in there at the council's discretion, then, then I, I'll take it. It's, it's, it's improvement, and, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'd say, just, Mr. President, to be fair, yeah, I, I understand, and typically we have to come back for council, outside council, for general city stuff. Once we get over, you know, what is conflict, if anything's needed for conflict that fits those parameters, more money's needed. For me, as long as I will support those efforts, because it's kind of a moving target, not exactly snow and bird, you'll see, but kind of a moving target.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I agree with that. I think, you know, to the extent that the, the city council has a discretionary fund that's available for a council to ask questions, answer questions, where there might be a, a, a conflict. And then if it, if it becomes clear that there is a conflict, as you said, then, you know, a further requisition, a further, you know, amount can be, appropriate amount can be determined at that time. But I think that, if that, if that's the intent of this and that's how it's in the budget, then I'm, I'm quite content with that. I appreciate your clarifying that.
And just to, Mr. President, I suppose, I want to give credit to President McLaughlin advocating, as you all have, advocating for that need and you know, that there'll be an opportunity, I think, in Leach, and whether this ends up in the charter process, which I won't be here after, but I want to support that. If there's an opportunity, how we formalize things, I think we have this runway to at least start that conversation with, I agreed with the necessity of that, and that's why we put the money in here, but understand that we may come up with there may be suggestions or recommendations from the president and the council that, how to refine that. I just don't have all those answers, but we didn't want to delay it further.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If I could comment on this just very quickly and acknowledge that I know, Mr. Mayor, as you're leaving, you're thinking about how to leave the situation better as you depart, and that is something that I think about, regardless of being president or being a city council in general, just leaving things better than the way I found it. And I think that there are several appropriations that you've made that are going to leave the city council better for the next term, for the next generation of councilors. We do have in the, in the budget money for a legislative aide, an assistant to help us with our Legislative Matters Committee. There will be money for the planning for the Land Use Committee to help us do zoning changes as we see fit. And there's several other things that I just think are going to leave things better off. But I, and I think they're all game changers, so things that are going to make things better for the city and for us as councilors. I did speak to the city about this $25,000 for legal services, and it seemed to me like it was more about specifically very specific litigation issues that are currently at work, that money has already been appropriated for in the past. So I'm concerned that, like, I, I feel like the legal services would be the big game changer for us to be able to go to outside council when necessary and have that ability. I think it would be possibly the first in the Commonwealth. And I know that other cities in the Commonwealth are looking at Somerville on this issue in particular. And I just don't feel like what we have in the budget right now is the game changer that I'd like to see. And I just don't feel like what we have in the budget right now is the game changer that I'd like to see. So I just want to state that I am very grateful for the many things in this budget that will benefit us directly and benefit the community. But I would love to come to a resolution on it this budget season so that people feel like they have appropriate representation.
Through you, Mr. President, I agree. And you, I'll say, as I said to you, I've had full commitment to work that all out. We want to leave it authentically in a better way. It's not just, you know, we understand, you know, whether 25 is enough, but make the intent authentic as possible. And I'm committed to work with all of you to hammer that up. But we wanted to move forward as you have urged us to, and the other councils are. And we can, I feel confident we'll get to that soon.
And I'll also add too that we have a new Assistant City Clerk position in the budget. So I appreciate that as well. Councilor Davis, did you have a comment on this?
Well, just a thank you, Mr. President, through you to the mayor, or I guess to you, just a clarification because I think I just heard two different things. It is, and I recognize we'll get into this in committee, but because the mayor's sitting here tonight, tonight he's here, and I'm not on the committee, so I have a chance to ask the question, clarify. Is that $25,000 specific for matters that already exist? Or is it a fund that the council can use if we have questions that we want to ask a legal counsel?
It's ultimately, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole thing. But it's not meant to be as rigid as might be understandably perceived. So I have to look at that because that's not the intent. So as you have described what your focus is, and I agree, as I'm telling you publicly, and as the president has repeatedly advocated, as well as all of you, that's where we intend to be. And that's why I feel confident we'll work it out. If it's not clear, we'll make it clearer. And we want to do this, it's either do it the right way or don't do it at all. So I'm a little, you know, again, I think best in committee, but it's not intended to be rigid. I don't think matters already there. I think we need, obviously, if there's something ongoing, we'll have to support that financially. And ongoing matters alone can eat $25,000 in a flick of a, you know, of a pen. I think we know that. So I'm fully committed to make sure that's clear and where that discretion lies and how there'll be a check and balance, much like if the mayor or any mayor now in the future seeks outside funding for, funding for outside council. I really feel confident we'll work through this and fund it appropriately. No matter what we fund, it'll be ceded. Hopefully, we won't need more monies, but in many cases, we do on the outside council.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
And I'll be involved in this conversation, Mr. President, as well as a counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'll be paying attention to it, I promise.
All right, Mr. Mastaboni, did you have a comment before we move on?
Sounds like we moved on. I'm happy to talk about it further in committee, talking about why we chose what we did, sort of unlocking that, that object and how it's sort of difficult to budget these types of services so we can have that conversation, and we're looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly to the mayor and your staff, thank you for the presentation. What really struck me was the conversion of new growth into substantial commercial development. And with the projects that are online that are going to be coming in, I don't think there is any administration in the past who could have been, who has ever had such an anticipation of future commercial development coming in and all of the revenue. So, you know, this is my last few months on the city council. So, you know, that is one thing that has really struck me. And as the city moves forward, that's something that the future administration, future city councils, and residents of the city should really welcome because it is an opportunity that we've never had in the transition that I'm aware of. And I've gone way back in my, you know, in my studies, the summer growth for college and stuff. So I think that's really a positive. Now, the question I do have, and this is perhaps a technical one for Ed. The American Recovery Funds came in as a grant which we approved. So now, once we've approved it as a grant, what ability, if at all, do we have over how those funds are expended, given their nature as a grant? And by us, I mean the city council.
Mr. Mastaboni?
I, I'm sorry.
Come in.
Hi, Mr. Bean. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, it is a grant, as Council White did mention. So it is the executive department's discretion. But of course, as the mayor has said earlier in this presentation, that the money needs to be thought about in a very planful way with assessment of community needs and a planning process. So as we have done throughout the experience with the CARES Act and FEMA, we've been regularly communicating with the Finance Committee and providing reports on spending. But I think, you know, as the mayor's saying, we step back now and put together a planning process so we can truly assess the needs of the community and make sure that it's a very thoughtful approach and how this money is spent.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted folks to, because that was my understanding. Once we approved it as a grant, it comes in basically, you know, to the administration. So I assume in the next six months, it's not all going to be accounted for as far as how it's going to be spent. And it will be latitude that will be given to the incoming administration. And there'll also be, you know, a new city council as well. So I'm just, you know, inquiring basically about your intention about how much flexibility the next administration, the next city council is going to have with regards to these funds.
So if I also may add, it's an important question and point because there's no other way to accept it, that money, but for agreement. So we didn't have a way to choose for it. So the public knows that if the city as a community didn't want 31 million, they was like, you take it or leave it. And again, this has never happened this way. It comes direct to the municipality. And by the way, they are still evolving some of the guidelines, but that is clear. It is a bright line. How we move forward, we want to be deliberate, engaged, thoughtful, and we don't want to drag on. We have needs here. We plan on outlining with the community the needs and making that commitment and investment. Some of the things, I mean, some of you are not allowed to do, but we will not utilize just the backfill city coffers and revenues. Just I can be candid, you know, there's an impact on tax in the city when valuations go up and everything. A lot of people, the homeowners and the most wealthy homes have the ability to pay. And you, Mr. Councilor White, helped lead historic adoption of residential exemption that other communities can't even get a portion of. Some can't even get 10% or 15% passed. So we do a lot in this community led by the council and our administration to help alleviate the impact on taxpayers. We want to use this money wisely, as Ben Ewan Campen mentioned, Council Ewan Campen, get it out the door. People, in fact, make that commitment without, again, not missing that opportunity, not building any structural deficits down the road. Whatever we seed that might have an impact long-term, we want to recover in the capital and the operating budget if you're administration or council. We want to make sure the runway is there to have the flexibility and resources to pick it up. So if we start a program or something with those ARPA funds, the money's gone after two years. We need to make sure what we're thinking about, take the same approach we've done for the past 20 collectively. So you're all in a position, this community is in a position to carry that forward if that program's having the impact that we envisioned it to, and we want to continue it or increase it.
Yep, through the president, I appreciate that. I wasn't intimating that anybody pulled a fast one. That is the only way grants can be handled.
I know what you were saying. No, I understand.
Right. And I just wanted the councilors to also, you know, in case there were any questions that become a point in everyone's mind. And again, I'm not at all suggesting that the money go into the general fund to act as a massive subsidy for budget ranking. No, I was just wondering the timeline as far as whether it was the intention of this administration to basically establish how all of those funds are going to be used or whether there will be some for the next administration or whether that's even firm enough at this point in time to even, you know, make a decision on.
Well, wherever the planning takes us to you, Mr. President, is the best way to answer it. We have a lot of planning to do, and then some of those investments will carry over, ceded, whether or not there's money left. We're going to do, if the plan calls for a full expenditure in order to make community now commit that, we're going to make that commitment. If much of, some of it needs to evolve over a couple of years, then that's what we'll do. Whether the plan, remember, we have two years. I think there's a burn count. It's a two-year grant, maybe pass one more after the next calendar year. So we will be engaged with the council on that. And then when we transition, especially with the next administration, as well as the community, obviously, I know Ed Bean wanted to comment.
Mr. Bean, I think you might be muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm distracted by that. So just to clarify that, the grant money must be obligated by the end of 2024, December 31st, 2024. Obligated means contractual obligations must be sent and actually spent by 2026. So this will certainly transcend this administration and a lot of planning is required. So that's, that's, that's the, and there's a good deal of flexibility.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set. I appreciate it from both the mayor and Mr. Bean.
All right, Council Sturza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for Mr. Bean regarding the ARPA funds. There is, hi. Mr. President, through you, Mr. President, Mr. Bean. So with the ARPA grant funding, do you have in mind a public, I know that, like, a timeline established even envision of when you can approach the city council in public about the process of dispersion?
We are, we undergoing an assessment right now, a community assessment procedure right now. So I think we'll be rolling out that timeframe hopefully in the near future, to give a better sense. There's a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of guidance that have come down from either the feds or the local ANF, state local ANF. It seems to be a great deal of flexibility. But there's also, we need to hear some guidance in terms of how it's to be accounted for. And, you know, a little bit more granular, granular understanding of what we can specifically spend in very broad category. So we're going through that, we're going through it, trying to set the structure up, right?
If I may add to it for you, Mr. President, if you recall, we have engaged a consultant specializing to guide many municipalities in doing this. We're also, I mentioned earlier, alluded to it, and regional collaborating regionally with our partners on municipal, understand how they're approaching answering their questions or what we're doing, as well as the staffing, you'll need to do this right. We want to get going. We have made no determination where the money should be spent. I've alluded to some areas that have come here, the council, the community, that we're all well aware of. If we have the opportunity to address things now, we will not hesitate. So I submit this timetable has been evolved at a very rapid pace as we move forward every week and every day.
That's encouraging. Mr. President, through you, to Mr. Bean, thank you for that elaboration, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bean, three months, six months? I know. It's a preparation, but.
We're very anxious to move forward, so we're trying to get, put the pieces in place right now. Not only assessing the community needs, but we also have to discuss how the money is going to be and a more effective way of getting the money out to disaffected residents and businesses as well. I'm sure that, you know, surely in the next few months, plans will be formulated. But again, as the mayor said, we need to do, we need to make a real effort to assess the need of the community. That means a lot of outreach.
And if I may just add, I'm sorry to interrupt, because the assessment, we have not just intuition, not just antedote. We have a real experience where that assessment should take us, right? But when we go back and report and share data with regional partners, different levels of government, state and the federal government, it's important that we undergo on a formal assessment and we document that. Also, guidance, as Ed Bean has mentioned, is still evolving, believe it or not, from the federal government. We have the money, and there are some questions, and I'll use just a general example, you know. If we're trying to help a certain small business, a sector in our small business community, you know, how does that match up against other small business assistance or something else the state's doing? So we can leverage that opportunity greatest and spread the money. Listen, we have one allotment of about 31 million. We'll get at least that and maybe more based on the county disbursement. Seems like a lot of money, but we want to spread it as far as possible. And if we're targeted and we can leverage other resources that we know, any sector of our community or families affected are getting to help double the positive impact or spread resource to the other areas we may have, we want to do it. So the assessment's going to be critical, that guidance, and we would like to get going yesterday. I think we just went right away without knowing, I think, not, I know that's not what Bean suggested. We'd miss a lot of opportunity.
And right, because from what I understand, that the, that the ARPA guidelines are a little more flexible and not as stringent as the CARES Grant, from what it seems like, or the guideline.
Through you, Mr. President, definitely not as, not just as stringent as the CARES Grant, but to get the money directly, we are not subjected to the rigid interpretation that Governor Baker's administration undertook. For example, the inability to give money to individual entrepreneurs and artists and so forth. There was one example, they, remember, if you recall, they refused to adopt a section of the CARES Act. And even the city of Boston adopted it, because the CARES Act went to three entities. The Commonwealth, the city of Boston was their own entity, and Bonestable County. So we fell under the Commonwealth, but the city of Boston adopted sections, so they got more flexibility with the funds from the same source of funding. We're not subject to that rigidity any longer. But there's still a lot of questions, which is why when Ed Bean mentions guidelines are evolving, those guidelines may help us target other areas, but we're going to be coming back to you, the public. It's going to be, we mean what he said, a very robust engagement process. But when we know things we can do right now, we're not going to wait months to do it. We'll, we'll tell you why we're doing, why we're doing, because there's a certain residents, our community that were adversely impacted or businesses, we want to help them right now.
Thank you. And if I may put in a really quick plug that I echo our president's with the fact that it would be lovely to have an ongoing, free-flowing legal counsel for the council, for the city council. Thank you.
Loud and clear. Thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions or comments before we move on to the schools? All right, here are no further comments. Let's see, Council Scott moves away with the readings of which items here? We'll weigh the readings of items two and what we read to, weigh the readings of items three to 14 and refer those, those and item two to the Finance Committee. And Mr. Clerk, can you please read item number 15?
Mr. President, item number 15 is a communication submitted by the School Committee requesting the appropriation of $84,267,002 to fund the fiscal year 2022 school committee budget.
All right, Mr. Mayor, are you leading this presentation as well?
No, this will be the Superintendent Schools. But thank you, Mr. President, through you and the council. I'll be tuned in. But thank you for the opportunity to present and look forward to ongoing conversations.
Thank you very much. And Superintendent Skipper and Chairman Green, thank you for attending. Seeing no discussion, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to this D and C council. It's my honor as Chair of the School Committee for year 2021 to introduce the School Committee's investment to budget. I will make my remarks before I hand it over to the Superintendent. This is my fifth as a member of the Summerville School Committee, my second as Chair, and I've also submitted one as Chair of the Finance Committee, the School Committee. And I want to start by saying that despite the fact that this is, as a term we've all heard, to the point where we're all numb, unprecedented year, and a district has faced unprecedented challenges. While our district was running, working harder than ever before to provide services to students during the pandemic, we've also managed to produce, which I, what I think is honestly, in complete sincerity, the best budget we've ever produced for this city council. I'm going to start by giving my esteem, my thanks for that to Frederick Gorski. What you're seeing for you for the first time really is what we're calling an all-funds budget, which is that you're seeing not just the money that's allocated from the city, but the influx of federal cash. This district's great work over historically at getting grant funding and really a strategic approach to budgeting that has been years in the making. And, you know, we'll only get better news to come, but I think it presents the best, most transparent, most apprehensive view of where we are going as a school department we've ever done. In fact, my suspicion is that several questions you may ask tonight. In fact, my suspicion is that several questions you may ask tonight or later in finance will come as a result of the unprecedented level of transparency this budget represents and things that you may not have known going on in prior years are now visible to you. That being said, this also, but it also represents a real balancing act. Like districts throughout the country, we are on the verge of the largest investment in federal funding education since the passage of Title I. But it's coming with, it's coming out with a cost because it's a short-term transparent influx of cash. So while we try to deal with the very real challenges as we come out of this COVID pandemic and the various challenges that face our students today, tomorrow, next year, and years to come, you're trying to do that in a way that is mindful of the fact that budgets, this year's budget is not going to be beyond end though, and we want to make sure we invest our money in such a way that three years from now, five years from now, we're not coming to, on the verge of, as some districts have had in recent years, need to take very real cuts because we did not plan for a long term. So this budget is a balance of the fear urgency of now and our responsibility to the families of summerable schools and the taxpayers of Somerville to be, to be mindful long-term towards of our budget. And with the forces of conversation, again, this is a budget we are, we as a school committee are very proud of. And we are proud of, and we're excited about the future and our investments and equity that will, this budget represents and will become important. And with that, through you, Mr. President, I would like to yield my time to the superintendent.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking each member of this council for all of its past support, you know, that you provided to our schools and to me as superintendent. I'll be going into my seventh year as superintendent here. I'd also like to thank all of our Somerville Public School staff that are here tonight. I see many of our central staff, I see our school-based staff, I see educators, our classroom teachers on here. You know, really need to thank them for their working to their capacity, their maximum capacity in what was the most difficult of years. And they didn't do it with a complaint and they always kept the students and the families at the center. And so I'm proud of each of you and I'm thankful for each of you. And so I'd like to begin with that. It's my honor tonight to present to this council a budget that our team believes will support our students, our staff and families as our school system returns to normal following an unprecedented and disrupted school year that was caused by the pandemic. This budget focuses on supporting the social, emotional and mental health needs of our students, the academic needs and gaps that may have formed because of remote learning, during remote learning, and physically the time away that they spend from classrooms. Compensatory services for our special education students and our multilingual learners. And it's a budget that continues to support and advance the deep and critical equity work that as a district, we've been engaged in for the past several years. We believe this is fiscally sound and educationally responsible as a budget. And we're also attempting in the budget to leverage private, state and federal grants with an all-resource approach to address both the immediate needs that we know we have and allow capacity for addressing our intermediate and long-term student needs as they emerge over the next several years. I'd also like to thank our school committee for working tirelessly this year with all of the unknowns the pandemic brought to produce a budget that, as our, our chair has said, is the culmination of many meetings, conversations, recommendations, and frankly, struggles that reflect the voices of our school communities and our Somerville community. And I'd like to give a special thanks to our finance chair, Alana Crepshion, for running such an inclusive and well-organized process with Director Gorski in the most difficult of circumstances. In Somerville Public Schools, we've always held the belief and vision that our commitment is to develop and meet the needs of the whole child. You hear me say this every year, intellectually, socially, emotionally and physically. From March of 2020, when the pandemic began until now, we've learned exactly what that means and how much our students and families rely on us. We've been the main source of food and clothing distribution. We've ensured families had both technology and internet access to learn. We built a robust remote learning plan. We ensured students and parents had the mental health services they needed. And we opened our schools with city health department to ensure testing, vaccinations and healthcare was in place. Now, as you can imagine, the pandemics meant letting go of some of the priorities that we had at one point to ensure our students and staff's more immediate needs were met. Now, we're still committed to an adjusted timeline to achieve our school committee goals, diversifying our Somerville Public School staff through recruitment, hiring, retention, development and advancement strategies, of completing a district enrollment study and developing a vision for school assignment and programming aligned with the district's equity policy, of designing, evaluating and implementing a student-based budgeting process that's similar to a weighted student formula process, and creating a milestones of learning roadmap that aligns academic and social emotional benchmarks for students in each of the various grade levels. Through you, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Finance Director Gorski. He's going to do the next couple of slides. I cannot say enough for his tireless work, his creativity, his sensibility throughout this process. It's my honor to work with him, Director Gorski.
Mr. President, thank you, Superintendent. So every budget we go into has certain guidelines which we follow. And these are to provide equity and full access for all students, maintain and support all grades, pre-K through 12 classrooms with providing academic support and enrichment, ensuring college and career readiness for all of our students, investing in program initiatives for, to promote school readiness from birth to kindergarten, engage in fully inclusive and transparent, transparent process with the school communities, with the school communities. And I'll talk more about that in the next slide as we develop the FY22 budget. Ensured that all our legal and contractual mandates will be met. That includes our SED and ELL programs. Given the changing state and federal funding landscapes, and this is obviously important with the ESTR funding and the ARP funding on the city municipal side, making sure that we're budgeting efficiently and responsibly. And we know, and as the Chair Green mentioned, you know, we obviously in out years, we have the funding now, but we also have to plan for the future too, and what that will mean, you know, in FY25 and beyond. And then very important for the current year, as I mentioned with the ESTR funding, to leverage an all-funds approach as we approach coming out of, coming out of this pandemic and dealing with learning loss and social emotional needs of our students. So our budget development process has been altered certainly by the pandemic. Last year for FY21 and for FY22, it begins in the fall and certainly is picks up in January. This year, we started with phone calls to all of our principals and department heads. We had meetings, budget collaborative meetings that we have with all school and department heads. We had bi-monthly meetings with our school committee. We included our LPAC, CPAC, the PTA and school-like school-side councils to make sure all stakeholders have a say in the budget process and input as to what the final budget will be. And obviously, we had our, we had our public hearing on the school side in May, and then the school committee voted on the budget in May 26.
Thank you, Director Gorski. You know, as part of our annual budget presentation, you know that I like to highlight a few of the accomplishments achieved during the current academic year, being an all-different year. Certainly, at the top of the list was in March, the opening of the new Somerville High School building. It is magnificent, magnificent in so many ways. Certainly, the finest building I've ever stepped foot into or worked in. And it is going to be quite the home for many a Highlander in the years to come. And that's, that's really in tribute to all of you for helping to make that happen and to our taxpayers. You know, we, we continue to work with full commitment to be an anti-racist district with the 2020 and 2021 launching of our school-based equity specialists, full-time SFLC liaisons at each of our schools. We've developed goals for advancing equity in each school improvement plan and continued school and district PD with partners such as the Leadership Academy, Unbound Ed and the Seed Project. And in our commitment to transparency and commitment to continuous improvement for ourselves, we were selected by the Rennie Center, which does educational policy to feature SPS in their feature series, A Year in the Life. And this series highlights both the positive outcomes and the challenges and struggles that we as a district faced during the entire year of the pandemic. And so it will be an important reflection tool for us to look back on, to think about what we could have done better or different, but to also celebrate the things that we were able to accomplish. In our commitment to an all-funds budget, you've heard that term now multiple times, we've continued to fundraise and apply for grants that support the priorities of our district and in turn, our students, staff and families. We've included in this slide just a few of the grants that range from one-year grants to three-year grants. And as you can see, the Bar Foundation has been instrumental in funding our high school redesign work at both of our high schools. The Boston Foundation has been fundamental in supporting our students' insights platform and our equity work. The Nellie May Foundation has supported our educational developer, educator development and equity work. And DESI and the Commonwealth Children's Fund has supported throughout our birth to five early childhood work and our educated diversification work. So we really benefited from just a huge injection of grant dollars to complement the generous budgets that you give us each year to do this critical work. The heart of Somerville Public Schools are students and staff. And this slide highlights just a few of the wonderful awards and recognitions that our students and staff have earned from the seal of by literacy to the creation of award-winning public service announcements to advocacy projects on critical topics like voting and youth voting, to state art, music and technology awards. Our students just continue to shine. Pandemic, no pandemic. You know, a special note, Somerville High School senior Kevin Wen was in fact named a U.S. Presidential Scholar, one of only 161 students in the entire United States. And our own Argenziano principal, Glenda Soto, joined our other distinguished staff members, Dr. Jessica Boston-Davis and Susanna Hernandez-Morgan, who's here tonight, by being selected as Influence 100 Fellows on their path to being future superintendents. Whether it's the State Science and Engineering Fair, the Skills USA competition at the state for career tech, or the Greater Boston League, rinks, pools, fields, courts, our students just stand out for their hard work, their talent and their determination and pride of being Highlanders. Because of the pandemic, the state MCAS test wasn't administered last year, and this year's is a greatly altered version of it that won't have results available until the summer. So we're doing a lot of organic-based assessment just through the teachers as we get the students back. But we did want to share that our graduating seniors, despite the most difficult of years, have been accepted to so many wonderful two- and four-year colleges and universities, public and private. We have record 19 acceptances to Tufts. We have students heading to MIT, to Harvard, to Yale, to all the UMass campuses, Berkeley and Boston Conservatory for music. We have two Posse scholars and one presidential scholar, Kevin Wen, who's among this class of 2021 that will graduate on Monday. And extremely proud of all of them. Yeah, as a district, through your financial support, we've been able to provide students with the academic and social emotional support needed to stay in high school and succeed beyond high school. In slide, in this slide here, you can see the sharp increase in our four-to-five-year graduation rates with a historic high of 92.5% and 94% respectively, at Somerville High this past year. This is well above the state average and well above city averages that surround us. And this is really a testament to the work of the whole district and all of our schools and staff, but certainly to Somerville High School and the full circle for their continued work in supporting our students, particularly those that need the most support. You know, similarly, our dropout rates have seen a dramatic decrease in recent years, with the exception of last year. We did see, you know, a troubling trend that some of our students drop out or leave and left last year for the remainder of the year mainly to support themselves or their families during the pandemic. So we've been actively re-engaging those students and we've been successful in bringing many of them back in the hopes that they can graduate this year. Though we're still at or below the state average, we're determined to return to our historic pre-pandemic low of below the 1%. I mean, that really is the threshold that we strive for, lower than that, where you can literally count on single hand the number of students that have dropped out and we continue to re-engage them even years later. And then over the past several years, our district's done a great job of training on de-escalation, mediation and restorative practices in lieu of traditional discipline, things like suspension and expulsion. You know, suspension and expulsion rates have a strong correlation with the school-to-prison pipeline. And as you can see from this slide, both our in-school and our out-of-school suspension rates have consistently declined over the past five years. We also look closely for disparity across subgroups of students. And this may be our students of color, this could be special education or our multilingual learners. It could also, you know, it could also be students, socioeconomic student, challenged students. And while we've made consistent progress in addressing the disparities that exist, we're committed to making sure that we continue that hard work until there's no disparity at all. And you know, in this slide, really, you know, it's the premise, students can't learn if they're not in school regularly. So chronic attendance is another school, school-to-prison pipeline indicator. We put a great deal of effort into developing an attendance work model where strong family engagement, communication and home visitation are key components. And as you can see from our attendance rates in this slide, we're at or above the state average and we continue to improve each year. Each year with city council, I like to share the post-secondary plans of our students, and it's always delayed a year. Traditionally, we end up by the end of the cycle being around 90% of our students go on to some form of higher education. That could be two-year, that could be four-year, that could be technical ed. And that, you know, we, we, we also have a growing work population that may combine some university or college or technical career work along with working in whatever career tech pathway that they were involved in. Our CTE program continues to grow through a robust exploratory program. And I, you know, I think to have a large group that are prepared to go out straight to work in their career and be able to continue to learn as that career provides it is a testimony to that CTE program and to its staff. At the time we collect the data, there's always a bit of a lag for students in figuring out, there's always that portion, particularly last year and particularly this year, who are still trying to figure out what makes sense, a gap year, going straight to work for a year and then the intent to go on to second, post-secondary. But in general, we end up at around that 85 to 90% that are going on. In this slide, we're just kind of reminding everyone of the demographics of the district and the individual schools. You know, historically, our special education and our multilingual programming, those percentages have remained pretty steady. They might go up one, they might go down one, but they generally hover around 20% for special ed and about 18% for our multilingual learners. School committee to, our school committee goal two is to launch a comprehensive enrollment study this coming fall. The plan had been a year ago, obviously the pandemic shifted all of that. But that will be undertaken this coming fall and it's to really help inform the location or perhaps the relocation of special ed and ELL programming and address any kind of demographic disparities that we may see forming in a school. So there'll be more to come on that as we undertake that in the fall. Through you, Mr. President, I'm going to pass it back over to Director Gorski for the next couple of slides.
Thank you. So this next slide is our per people spending by function. Typically, this is called per people expenditures. So hopefully in the future years, we'll go back to PPE being related to people spending and that, you know, related to a pandemic. This is based upon, we file an end-of-year financial report annually with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's a report on all our revenues and expenditures. And they come out with all sorts of different reports. This is basically bumping different categories up against state averages. For city of Somerville, for the district, our per pupil spending based upon FY20 was $20,913 per student. That was up from $20,337 in FY19. A couple of categories I would like to point out to the council. Under teaching, the blue, the blue bars are Somerville, the red is state average. You'll notice that the district is investing significantly more in teaching, investing more in professional development, instructional materials, guidance, pupil services. This next slide is related to the funding and estimated revenue. So this is inclusive of all our revenue sources for FY21 in comparisons to FY22, including the local appropriation budget, the general fund budget that was passed last week by school committee. Includes private state and federal grants. You'll notice that there's a significant increase in the grants that's related to the ESTR funding that the district is receiving. Uh, we had a slight decrease in the special education circuit breaker, uh, that we receive. Um, couple of our, our revolving accounts I'd like to point out, uh, this has been discussed in school committee and with with city council and city council finance meeting because, uh, I presented at city council related to the school lunch program. Some of the items, some of the accounts who were hardest hit by the pandemic were our revenue based accounts or fee based accounts, which in school, which includes school lunch community schools. Cool lunch in particular, our, uh, food service workers were on the front line providing, uh, food for families in the city. Um, and you know, and I'm sure, uh, everyone in this meeting would, uh, agree we're an invaluable resource. Uh, when I presented to city council, the city council approved a six hundred thousand dollar appropriation of the stabilization fund for the school lunch account, uh, which the district, uh, truly appreciates. I just want to report back to city council that based upon my, um, forecast, the school lunch account will finish the, the year on budget and that is in large part due to the six hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated by city council.
Thank you, Director Gorski. These, you know, the, these next few slides we include each year and I think it's important because we are such a large part of the city budget to really share with you, um, both what we've been able to accomplish with the support you've given and then, you know, what our ask entails. Um, you know, in this slide, we've really because of your support, we've been able to move our equity work forward with the creation of school-based equity specialists. Um, these are specialists that help with their, their school leaders, um, create school-wide equity plans and they help to organize equity PD by staff and their needs. We're also able to launch a district-wide advancing equity task force that consists of staff to help identify and problem solve systemic inequities within the district by looking at data um, it across programming, policies and practices. Um, there's been several examples this year of the work that they've done. It's been instrumental for us and we're looking forward to that work continuing. And then next year, we hope with continued support to undertake a comprehensive review uh, by content of our curriculum. And again, that will be around, um, you know, looking at, uh, e-putting each of the curriculum content areas on a cycle of review um, and getting student opinion and voice about how they're experiencing the curriculum and how teachers feel about teaching that curriculum. We also plan to implement an anti-racist curriculum and training district-wide. We've done it in various areas of various schools and certainly within central, but, um, to have a district-wide plan and to expand our restorative justice training and programming district-wide. Um, and then finally to help our equity specialist not just be a singleton in a building, but rather to be able to have an equity team, much like the high school has had for the last couple of years in each of our schools. And then additionally, you know, we hope to support with your support to expand key initiatives, um, that we have investment within that we know work, um, becoming a man, which is currently at the Healy. Um, and that is for any of our youth that identify as male, um, but particularly our males of color uh, on route, and that will expand to the high school next year on route, which is, uh, began at the high school and that was to support our multilingual learners. And that will expand backward to be working with some of our middle school students. Um, in most importantly, to create youth-led programming, you know, this is where we really want to get is to, to raise our youth voice. Um, with initiative, new initiatives such as our Summerville High Tutoring Project and this builds off of our calculus project. Um, and the Community Design Lab, um, is, is sort of as mini, uh, equity task force as ways to really bring our student voice to the forefront. We, we continue to work hard to expand our out-of-school time programming, um, both during the school year and during the summer. Um, this year and next year, we see our out-of-school time playing a key role in returning to a new normal in SPS in addressing any of the academic and social emotional challenges that students may face due to the loss of in-person schooling during the pandemic year. Um, you know, your support this past year helped us to increase, uh, in a powerful way, our capacity or seat capacity with partners like Breakthrough Greater Boston, uh, which will be up to close to three hundred students. Um, and now we'll be following them into the high school years. Citizen Schools, which is at our Winter Hill and our East Somerville Communities, the Boston Debate League, which our students have, um, have, uh, done tremendous with and, uh, earned all kinds of prizes as they learn debate skills. Community Schools, which I know you're familiar with, on route, um, our rep department, we've been able to do some really creative partnership. Um, just big shout out to Jill Latham, our direct, the direct, the director is, she's just been able to really, uh, with George Capelli, support our needs in SPS, um, in the calculus project. Uh, in, you know, in order to develop the infrastructure to support the growth of these programs, um, both programmatically and operationally, we're asking within the budget for support for two new out-of-school time administrative positions. Um, and additionally, we hope to then further expand seat capacity, particularly for, um, populations like our multilingual language learners, our special education students, our students of color and families needing any kind of financial assistance um, across all of our programming so that there truly is access. Um, and in addition to special ed and, um, our multi-language, ling-lingual learners, um, in that specific programming, we also hope to offer explicit and embedded academic intervention for students during the summer and school year. So we will be, um, working very creatively to embed within community schools, within the calculus project, um, within all, pretty much all of these partners, blocks of time where interventionists can work on math skills or literacy skills or science skills in an attempt to make it the most engaging and, and have it make sense for our students. You know, and to be, uh, successful as a district, you, you have to have a comprehensive early education plan that begins at birth. This has been the work under Dr. Q for a while now. Um, and over the last several years with our children's cabinet and some of those been recognized nationally and in the state as a leader in early ed. Um, this past year, through your support, we were able to continue our universal K readiness curriculum and assessment initiatives. We were able to increase instructional support and PD for our mixed delivery system across Somerville and that was vital during the pandemic. And we were also able to support and partner with three Head Start classrooms um, as partners in full day with community schools to help with relief for parents. Next year, with your support in this area, we hope to implement an anti-bias educational focus to support culturally responsive teaching in our pre-K classrooms, um, which, which is in part our See Every Child Initiative. And we hope to increase our coaching capacity to support kindergarten readiness across some of our public schools, Head Start in our mixed delivery. These are just key markers for readiness for students that as we see that readiness building, there's more success for the student and easier transition into the, into the primary grades. Um, under Director Trevasoni, we've continued to enhance our special education programming and services and reduce the need for some of our families to have to leave the district for out of district placements. This is something that makes my heart very full. Um, because our Summerville families really want their students to have a full experience of the Summerville Public Schools. And so for those of you that have heard the presentations year after year, you know, we began five, six years ago with about a hundred and twenty out of district placements. We've worked really intentionally with your support to be able to develop that programming. And as a result, we, this coming year, we have a prediction of about sixty to sixty-five students who would go out of district. And so we're still really working hard to lower that number because we know that, uh, our students benefit from being with us and having the whole Summerville Public Schools experience. Through your support, we expanded our transition program in the high school. It's getting very full. This is a program for our eighteen to twenty-two year olds, um, that will stay at Somerville High and, um, it includes a pretty amazing early college component at Cambridge College so that students can actually get dual credit. Uh, we've also extended our programming for students with autism, both in the number of classes we serve and in the supports that uh, our BCBA's and our speech and language pathologists provide. And we've broadened our partnership and training capacity to provide reading strategies and services across the board for all students. With your support in the next budget, we hope to continue to meet the demand of our growing number of younger students with autism. Um, we and Cambridge, um, have seen sharp upticks in the number of students diagnosed with autism, particularly at the youngest grades because of all the intervention work and early diagnosis we do, um, uh, early intervention that we do. Uh, we get the students as soon as we can and we start them, uh, in our programming. As a result, our capacity for the programming has need to be built up every single year. We also intend to take a comprehensive program review of our social emotional programming for grades K to six. Um, this again is ensuring that we're scaffolding enough social emotional supports in all inclusion opportunities for students so that students that traditionally may have had to be in a substantially separate may not need to be, they can actually be more fully included. Um, and then of course, we're looking deeply at the issue of compensatory services in areas such as academic support and a speech and language that were very difficult to deliver to students remotely. In the world of our multilingual learner education and programming through your support this past year, we were able to continue to build a, a strong newcomer SEI strand at the Healy. Um, we were also able to expand our multilingual family outreach with terrific partners like the Welcome Project. And we were able to expand the number of our general education and special education teachers who held ESL licensure. We have a significant population in Somerville Public Schools, um, that are duly identified. If they have a IEP for their special education needs and they also have the need to learn English at varying levels. Um, and so we, we, uh, we refer to students with both needs as, um, uh, as dual need. And so, um, it's really critical to have staff that hold both licensures so that they, they can understand how the different needs can be met. Um, and then finally, we were able with your support to build out our goal program. Um, if you remember, this is for our unaccompanied youth that might be older or age students coming into Somerville High as freshmen who may be nineteen or twenty years old and they really have a different set of needs as they're learning English and trying to get a high school diploma. And of course, we do that with our amazing, uh, partnership with scale. We hope for next year with your continued support to be able to build critical capacity within our multilingual education department for program coordination, assessment and placement. Uh, we hope to increase our social emotional supports and our trauma-informed practices in our, in our MLE programming at both Winter Hill and at the high school where we tend to serve middle school and high school age students. Um, we hope to complete, uh, in, uh, complete revamp and implementation of Umeedos curriculum, which has never really been done at the east and it's something the staff there has wanted and asked for. And so we're, we're hoping to be able to support that is it's reflected in this budget. Um, and excitingly, we are going to launch a new Samisa pre-K at the Healy. Uh, this is, this is specifically a pre-K class that's designed as a dual language preschool class for heritage Spanish speakers and it will be done in partnership with Head Start would make, which makes it extra exciting. The past year in the pandemic, uh, made clear certainly the role, the deep role that SFLC plays in supporting our schools and families. We just couldn't have done it without them. Um, your support last year allowed us to increase our family liaisons at one time, which was well ahead of their strategic plan to do so to full-time in our schools so that every single school had a full-time SFLC coordinator, liaison. Um, it also allowed us to ahead of schedule establish a multilingual service unit which was needed and this, this was really five full-time interpreters and translators um, that were able both in special ed and in SFLC to be able to meet, better meet the needs of our families and our schools for communicating, um, across the various languages that our families speak. Um, and it also allowed us to implement a comprehensive plan to address family needs regardless of whether we were in remote, we were in hybrid, we were in full in-person, um, which was back and forth all year and that required a lot of flexibility and planning. We hope through this next budget to continue, um, our strategic plan, which was worked on through SFLC with an outside consultant to develop an equitable compensation structure. We're looking deeply at our non-union positions, but particularly in SFLC um, to continue our inter-agency collaboration with city and state partners. It's vital to us um, in order to support, you know, our current unaccompanied minors, um, older youth and immigrant families as well as for those that may come to us this summer and next year. We want to be prepared. We don't want to be reactive. Um, and so that's really going to help us to be able to do that, the funding we've included and to continue to provide PD, um, pathways, leadership opportunities to the staff, to the parent leaders, to the caregivers in our community. Um, we really want to be able to create that scaffolding for. Certainly, as you can imagine, a, a critical need area throughout the pandemic and, and now certainly moving forward will, will be and was the social emotional wellbeing of our students, our staff, our families. Um, we saw it across the board deeply. This past year, we were able to increase embedded counseling and social emotional supports um, at a critical time during the pandemic for all schools. And we extended, uh, counselor support for students on five oh four plans. So every single five oh four plan was reviewed multiple times to ensure that students, while they were motor and hybrid, were getting their, their needs met. Additionally, we provided district-wide PD on trauma-sensitive practices. Um, and we sponsored a PBIS, which is Poso Behavior Intervention, um, System, uh, Institute for Teams that for each of the schools. And the idea there is to lead to, again, more positive behavior um, and to intervene before discipline is, is needed or warranted. Um, and that is in part, you know, that PBIS kind of training is what is so important in driving down the, uh, the suspension or the traditional discipline kind of, uh, kind of role that schools have had in the past. Um, for the next year, we have lots of hopes in this area. We hope to expand our mental health supports with the addition of two district social workers, um, as well as a district-wide adjustment counselor to be able to work across the schools and to also further support the councils that are based in our schools. We hope to continue our social emotional learning PD that has been high quality through Leslie. We've had cohorts of educators going through that for the past two years and we hope to continue that as well as partnership that we've done with the Rennie Center using for school-based teams. We hope to expand all of the embedded therapy, you know, we rely heavily on many of our outside service providers, Home for Little Wanderers, Cambridge Health Alliance, Riverside. Um, they've all stepped to the plate with us and they've been able to expand their capacity and in turn that's helped us to expand ours. Um, and so we'll be looking to expand those contracts to, again, to be able to be proactive as opposed to reactive with the students. Um, we also, uh, hope to provide, uh, school-based restorative justice training. We've done that with various schools, but we want to be able to do this district-wide so this consistency. And finally, to extend our, our mental health services to all the summer programming. And that includes not just Summerville Public Schools, uh, programming, but other kinds of partners, city agencies or nonprofits that may be working with our kids, um, on Summerville Public Schools campuses. Our human resource department continues the critical work of our school committee goal number one, diversifying and improving our district by employing a human capital strategy that involves the recruitment, the training, the retention, development, the advancement for our staff. Um, and that is, that is clear in how we retain our staff. Um, we have this past year through your support and the support of Desi's Diversity Network and Grant-funded Teacher Diversification Project. Um, we were able to develop a pair-to-teacher pipeline and we're seeing more and more pairs take advantage of that where we actually support their internship as well. We were able to redesign our recruitment and interview processes. Um, this was a big change within the school committee process uh, in, in as to who gets interviewed and selected for interviews. Um, we also were able to host multiple career, virtual career fears, which were, which were very different and maybe there'll be a thing of the future, maybe they won't, I don't know. Um, but we were able to hold multiple ones of them, uh, including our first virtual diversity recruitment fair that happened in collaboration with director, uh, with our director, just a doctor, uh, Jessica Bossett Davis, who's our Director of Equity and Excellence and she would be here tonight, but she has just had a, a, a child and so she, uh, she's home uh, as, yeah, with him. Um, this coming year, in addition to carrying on all the work that was associated with diversifying the SPS staff, we hope to replace our outdated and piecemealed HR system. This is very typical in districts our size, that you have to go to different applications in order to get HR information, it's closed processes down, it's clunky. Um, it also doesn't allow our principals and department heads to be hiring agents in that process actively. And so our goal is to streamline all of that with a transition over the summer to one updated and comprehensive HR system. The other key components of our human capital strategy are, um, development and advancement. And, uh, you know, Director Woods is, is, has rocked this, this area. Um, you know, through your support and the support from, from Desi, this has been a, a big priority of theirs and the Nellie May Foundation, which has been a tremendous support for us fiscally, um, throughout this, the effort. Um, we were able to offer over ten thousand hours of quality PD to over five hundred and fifty educators. Um, we continued and sustained our PD focus on equity. Um, you know, we, uh, we expanded our PD partner base and brought on more partners that could give quality, uh, PD besides our educators. Um, and for next year, we hope with your support to begin the implementation of what's the culmination of three years worth of work through the Nellie May Grant, which is our Educated Leadership Model. Um, and this, this really is a model that allows us to do many things. It allows us to, um, align academically using teacher and, and educator voice from the field. Um, it allows us to continue to expand our pilot leadership positions such as the equity specialist that I spoke about earlier. It allows us to create new positions, um, that are content alignment leaders. that are content alignment leaders so that our staff who know the work the best because they're closest to it have active voice in helping us to create that vertical alignment of curriculum. And it allows us to create a professional collaboration team leaders so that we can have like at the high school where we're adopting a new schedule and it's going to be a different block system that that that's something where peers can actually support other peers in that work. And finally, and very important, it allows us to continue to expand and diversify our pipeline for future Paris teachers, counselors, admins. Going all the way down to 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 students in high school as seeing this as viable careers and helping us to figure out what a training program could look like for them. At this point through you, Mr. President, I am going to turn it back over to Director Gorski for the next couple of slides.
Thank you. And so the next four slides are focused on the budget and staffing. One thing that I would like to point out to City Council in the presentation that I sent over for the salary line on this particular slide. It has sixty nine million one oh two oh ninety, and that is the total salary line. I'll make that correction and send it over to you. The intent of this slide was to show what can in comparison to the FY twenty one budget is to show the FY twenty two budget, but also show the two, the one new initiative and the transition of the school nurses. So for the sake of transparency, to show under a normal year, typically year, our budget increase would have been about five percent. But obviously, we we have the MBTA pass proposal. And as I mentioned, the transition of the school nurse budget from city health to the district. And that's bringing our total general fund appropriation ask over eight percent. So that's this is an attempt to to break that out for City Council. So that's understood how that budget is broken out. So there are two sides to our budget. Obviously, we have the salaries, which is the majority of our budget, including our teacher salaries. And then we have our services and supplies. So for under our non salary budget, we had an increase. We have a proposed increase of four hundred and four thousand four eighty this year, mainly driven by the MBTA pass proposal. But some of the other items, apart from covering all the mandated costs, include our specialty programming and transportation and the LL programs. Funding is is mentioned by the superintendent, funding for Becoming a Man High School. Increase in funding for embedded embedded therapies to address social emotional needs coming out of the pandemic. Increase in funding for district and school based equity work. The purchase and implementation of a new HRAS and evaluation system. The purchase and implementation of a new UNIDOS curriculum. And the added school time expansion, which includes Boston Breakthrough and the Calcis Project in Enro. Okay, so this next slide is inclusive of the school nurses coming over the budget. So that's where that sixty million sixty nine million one oh two oh ninety is coming from. Representing a total change from FY twenty one of five billion nine thirty three five seventy one. That includes all COLAs. And additional positions, which include thirteen point seven FTEs broken down by district wide, school based, and what we're calling additional staff changes. Under district wide, we have out of school time director, a a part time data analyst for out of school time. The transition of the SPY, the Somerville Partnership for Young Children, SPYC Coordinator from a grant, the CPPI grant to the General Fund. As I mentioned, the school nurses coming over from city health to the district's budget. A multilingual program coordinator. And the school side, we're adding a grade six science teacher at the Argenziano. An additional assistant principal at East Somerville. Additional utility aids at the East. The addition of the some recent program preschool program at the Healy. Increasing the Spanish program at the Healy to a one point O, the Spanish teacher at the Healy. Expansion of the plumbing and HVAC teachers so that those become one point O F one point O FTEs in the budget. And a program director for community and work based learning. This is a grant based beyond learning classroom, a transition beyond learning classroom position that was funded under our grant. And we also are adding a part time, hoping to add a part time athletics trainer. Obviously, our our athletes, our student athletes are coming out of the pandemic. You know, basically haven't had the ability to train in a in a normal way. So having that additional support we think is needed. Building out our payroll manager back to a full time position. This is one of the positions that we cut to a point five based upon the difficult budget year last year in FY twenty one. Where the district actually cut six point seven FTEs. And then stipends for innovation work at our school sites. And we've increased, as the superintendent mentioned, and I mentioned earlier in this presentation, really a focus on an all funds budget this year. So though these positions are not hotter than the general fund, we we've been very transparent and included these in our discussion with school committee and and think it's important to include it. Include in discussion with city council. How we're utilizing our Esther funding. So as part of this Esther funding, the 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 way we've approached this, it's it's been very rules based in student based addressing learning loss, social emotional needs, compensatory services, ELL services and the like. So with our Esther funding, we're looking to fund twenty two FTEs for FY twenty two. Many of these positions have been mentioned by the superintendent. They include two additional social workers, one focused on lower grades, a student adjustment counselor, and operations manager for special projects. Some of that would be based upon COVID testing, but not limited to that. A multilingual assessment and placement coordinator. Additional, as I mentioned, resources for special education. So resource three resource room teachers for compensatory services and two speech and language pathologists also to address compensatory services. School based, a dean of students at the Capuano. A multilingual adjustment counselor at Winter Hill. An additional school counselor at the high school. A multilingual literacy specialist at the high school. And a tutor to address academic and rest restorative coaching at the high school. And for our additional staffing changes, we've added translators and interpreters both for sped and and for our general population through the SFLC org.
Thank you, Director Gorski. So this this particular chart is of the elementary class projection and it's it's really important this year because it shows that like other urban districts, we've lost a significant number of students from the pandemic. And this has been just a lot of shifting. Had a lot of families move out. We've had a lot of families move in. So there's just been a lot of shifting. It's somewhere in the range of about two seventy five, and it just kind of goes in flux. We've also seen a sharp decline in the number of multilingual learners that we typically admit during a school year as newcomers. Our hope is that we see some stabilization over the summer. Our intent to return students, which we we gave to parents the ability to to file an intention return that they come back strong, that we see a return to normal or increased numbers even for our multilingual learners. We made a deliberate decision to not reduce any sections due to enrollment specific reasons. So that the smaller class sizes can actually be used as a mechanism for delivering more personalized instruction and giving more social emotional support in the year of return. One way to see this is that we didn't lose two hundred and seventy five students. We're gaining forty eight hundred students back now in the coming year who will need more support academically and socially emotionally. As an FYI, when you you see changes in this in terms of sections, it's generally a section bubble. Or it's a change in programming and it's not due to enrollment. You know, each year I include this slide at the end to to really illustrate that Somerville is a village of supports and it takes the collective effort of the city, our schools, our partners, our local universities to provide the supports for our students, families and staff. This past fourteen months, the pandemic has proven that that lesson again and again and again. This list is not exhaustive, but you know, it really represents how supported and fortunate our public schools are here in Somerville. And how fortunate I am as superintendent to be here. In closing, I'd just like to thank this council for your support, not only at budget time, but all year long. You know, you take interest in our students and in our staff and in our families. You care deeply about the issues that impact them. You know, we present to you it's tonight a budget that we believe is fiscally responsible and we believe addresses the needs of our students, families and staff that are known to us right now. Given all that we've been through, all of us collectively for the past fourteen months. And we fully expect that we, when we return in full with the other twenty percent of our students who are remote, come back in person in the fall as well. And we return to that new normal that other needs are going to emerge. And in this way, we see this budget in the next few as an all funds. And we fully intend to use our grant dollars, state and federal, to help address any of those new needs that emerge. But we will use data and we will use voice in order to determine what those changes are. So I just want to thank you all again for your time, your consideration, and we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Please note for the record that Consul Davis is recused from school. That matters. I have Consul Strazza and Consul Bach.
Thank you, President. Maryam. Hi. I appreciate you all being here and for presenting such a thorough budget presentation. I had this question, Mr. President, through you to Superintendent Skipper. I'm like city council representative on the children's cabinet. And for most of the school year and during the pandemic, I've been very concerned about teacher burnout. And have questioned it and wanted to really find out more about it. And now we are entering summer. So and from what I've heard, there's been teacher burnout retiring early and some teachers transitioning from special ed to general ed. So with that, is does this reflect in the in the budget? And how does it look for the twenty one twenty two school year? And what is the plan, if anything, to address this?
Sure. So it's a great question, and I appreciate the question. So I think that teachers had to really learn an entirely new way of teaching with very little notice and very little preparation. And and at the same time that they many of them were also caring for their families. So I think that the burnout is very real this year everywhere. The same challenges that we have with staffing for the summer is what all of the districts around us are experiencing. And I think you see it in in other industries as well. What we've tried to do this summer is to really take the pressure off of the teachers. I mean, as much as we'd love to staff up programming, it's not going to help anyone if it just returns teachers that are more burned out in the fall and not able to be fully present to the students. So this is why we've really in building up the OST structure of hiring Heather McCormick and hiring an operations person. We're really trying to utilize the city agencies around us. And in many of the 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 folks who frankly are coming in and kind of spelling during that time to be able to offer programming to students. And then injecting very targeted way the academic pieces to the students that most we know right away most needed, either through compensatory or for regular education students. It might be literacy, reading, or it might be math, but in a very targeted controlled way with teachers that have identified and said, I'm ready. I I'm okay. I can work. I'm ready to do it. Like I I wasn't caring for family. And I and I I want I want that challenge. I think the best thing we can all do is to is to is to in the fall, we give our staff as much break over the summer as possible. And then in the fall, help them to be able to return to a new norm. And that includes helping them from a psychological standpoint to feel safe, to feel supported. You know, to ensuring that there is more staff available. And this is why we're building up so much of the social emotional piece that you see in the budget as a way to be able to help them strategize if a student's dysregulated or struggling, as many of our students have come back as such. It's not just the teacher trying to solve it. So I think that throughout the budget, there's different additional supports that have been added in that will help to address that. I think in the special ed case, you will see that there's very specific special education positions. So there's three resource room compensatory and two SLPs. And that's that's basically predicated on what we're calculating as a department is needed to begin the compensatory work. Additionally, we will be doing, you know, we're we're scaling back the PD for the summer. You don't want to teach us to feel like they have to do PD. Teachers are very habit creatures, like I was a teacher on that way. And if you offer PD, they feel like they have to take PD or there's something wrong with them. We don't want to even put that in brunt. So we're really being very select about what we're offering it, doing it and doing it toward the end of the summer as opposed to our normal, which starts right after the school break. So this will be something we clearly watch. In terms of the retirements, it is absolutely true that we have more retirements this year than we have had, certainly in my tenure. I can't speak to before. But you know, I I do think that the pandemic, as it has for many of us, has caused us to look at our priorities. You know, it's caused us to look at our life in a much bigger issue. And you know, if you can go out at seventy percent, do you really want to wait three more years to go out at eighty percent if you have grandkids or if you want to travel? And so I think some of what we're seeing is people just simply declaring what their personal priorities are. And we respect that fully and we want to be able to support that. So as soon as what I will say is our staff's amazing. As soon as they've had the sense they're going to retire, they let us know that. And that has enabled us to get a jump on being able to hire. So we're doing actually a very good job in our hiring. We've been able to fill many of the empty positions and we will continue to do that. Like July is a big staffing month. June's a big staffing month for that. So right now I don't foresee an issue with this. I think we will be able to return fully staff. Substitutes have been a challenge. They're a challenge everywhere. Part of our issue with substitutes is that we're actually running a pretty robust remote school for twenty percent of the district. And so some of our long term subs are being staffed in those positions. And so what will happen is after that, after the remote school ends on the seventeenth, those substitutes will return in their long term or their building capacity to the schools and that will re staff us. So I think, you know, the only other thing I would say is that some of the partnerships we have, be it with Citizen Schools, Boston Breakthrough, a lot of these are also pipeline initiatives, which is why we partnered with them, same with BAM. So that we actually as as students are going through them and then they go into to college, they come back as pipeline or in Citizen Schools case, their Citizen School fellows will work with them for two years and then they want teaching jobs in math and science. So we are constantly refueling with the young talent that's coming through those those programs. So a long and long answer to the question, but hopefully full that it's a genuine concern. I I do think we have adequately planned for it. But we also recognize that the asset dollars are there so that if something emerges that we haven't planned for, we will be able to fund it and support it.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. And I'm happy to follow up in the fall about what the numbers look like.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, I do have another question. Do you prefer that I let my colleagues go first and then I go right ahead?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Just a quick question to the Superintendent Skipper about the bus passes. How many in the budget? How many are you anticipating? Because I assumed everybody was going to be utilizing this, but how how many are you anticipating in the budget?
Correct. So we so through you through Mr. President. So so we are still working with the city on this piece. We know our high school students will take advantage of the the bus pass for numerous reasons. Part of the ed program that we've designed at the high school is to give students experiential experience doing internships out in the community. So we want them to travel and be able to travel. We also want to be able to extend it down as far as the age of twelve. And so so we will be working with the city on this and the numbers. A big piece of this is managing it well. You know, the each pass comes at a price. And so we want to be able to include families in the process so that families understand and they're on board with it. And if there's any kind of travel training that they want to do with the kids ahead of time, particularly the younger kids, they're able to do that. There might be some families that don't necessarily want the pass. So we will be doing some surveying. We'll be working with families. And from an administration standpoint, we'll be working with both both high schools as well as our central in in student support relative to the distribution and assignment of the passes. So as far as the number goes, Director Gorski, do you have an exact number yet? I don't. So as far as the number goes, Director Gorski, do you have an exact number yet? I don't believe so.
Yeah, through the president, no. We've, we've looked at it. I, I think to the superintendent's point, I think we need to survey and find out exactly. But it was based on the high schools, based on grades nine through twelve. But as you mentioned, it may expand.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have an anticipated number or a projection of any kind of?
Well, the high school, I mean, the high school at full with the rising eighth grade will be approximately twelve seventy-five. So, and then we of course would look at the students, the goal students who are at scale. And that's probably about another thirty to thirty-five. And then of course, we go down into the eighth, seventh and sixth grade where twelve and up is more applicable. And I use as a rough calculator, three fifty to four hundred students per grade level. This year it's a little lower than that, but again, our hope is that that builds back up again with the intention returns.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Bach?
Mr. President, good to see you, Superintendent Skipper, Chair Green and Director Gorski. I think it's, like I said to the mayor, I think the mayor's job and the superintendent's job is kind of like a tongueless job. And should I say happy seventh anniversary? Is that fair to say?
It's, it will be come July first.
So I'll, I'll, I'll give, I'll let that one slide, you know. Which is just around the corner and then I can properly, you know, like give you that accolade. I guess so first thank you to you and your staff for everything you've done through the pandemic. I struggled to keep up with all the memos that you, you were, you know, like releasing time and time and again. Some multiple, you know, in a day. So I really appreciate it. I know that everybody was really working a lot. And the presentation, there are some things that pique my interest. The social and emotional, you know, learning, the restorative justice, you know, social workers. It's, it's really great to see that, you know, like you're really, I mean, there's a lot happening in the schools. I don't need to even rehash some of the things that have happened. But I guess there's a lot more that we could do, which is I'm seeing that, you know, there are steps, there are progress being made, you know, and so we can continue to do more. I guess one of the questions that I have for you Superintendent Skipper is that as part of your goals to advance equity, so did you, you know, and probably, probably you did, probably, but I just want to hear, like, did you allocate funding for non-police de-escalation and diversion teams so that the district can stop calling the cops for help?
Through, through you, Mr. President.
Please go ahead.
So thank you, counselor. As a policy matter, as I'm sure you're aware, the school committee is examining its relationship with policing more broadly. We have, as we have for every year since I brought a school committee, at least I think every year since Superintendent has been on here, invested more dollars into mental health supports, restorative justice, and supports that we think divert people from the school prison pipeline. As a policy matter, figuring out whether how policing is appropriate in schools is something the school committee is, will be tackling through a robust new process that, you know, we want to make sure that to correct, to perfect our characters, people, the people who suffered the pain, who suffered the problem. So we are having a process that's going to censor the voices of students, particularly our multilingual and special education students who are disproportionately the students in Somerville who are on that front line and their families. So that is work we've done. We invested twenty-five thousand dollars this year to bring in support for, for the robust community outreach, which is in addition to all of the other investments made last year and this year to really up our community outreach level that we've never been at before. So we look forward to really getting meaningful community feedback, which the school can then use to draft new policing policies or perhaps to perhaps track new policing policies over the next year.
And through you, Mr. President, what I would also say, Councilor Bach, is that we've made some significant changes that I think anything relative to the school to prison pipeline would address. For instance, at the high school, based on student voice, we replaced what was sort of a very outdated security model of, you know, adults that didn't necessarily have relationships with the students and we replaced it with deans of students. And each of these deans of students has a counseling background, a counseling, sorry, and a counseling background or a social worker background. And so that is, that, that is absolutely a de-escalation strategy. So if there's an issue and, you know, what could escalate, say in a classroom, the dean of students who is really got the relationship with the student and the family can go to that classroom and they have the skills to be able to do that. We're also staffing up, as you can see, with all of the mental health supports. So this would be the inclusion of counselors, counselor educators, social workers, school adjustment counselors, they all have mental health background in some way, shape or form. And so, you know, part of what we will do is right now, we have three of those positions that are district wide. As we determine the needs using the district wide to complement what's already in the schools, we will fold those positions back into the schools themselves. So if we find that schools are fairly balanced, but there may be one or two schools that really need additional support, we'll fold that position back into the school as a way to absorb it back into the budget and also give the school that, that resource. We're also doing extensive training. Again, this summer we have to be cautious because of, you know, exactly because of what Council Strezzo pointed out in terms of the burnout. But in terms of next year, there will be a great deal of training around de-escalation, our restorative justice practices. We overhauled the mediation program that was at the high school, which was a wonderful program. But what we tried to do was to streamline it a bit more, so it was fully integrated, not only at the high school, but also the middle schools. And we use that program regularly now. And again, try to staff it with people with social worker or mental health background or deeply skilled with mediation. So we are, we're, we're really making an effort on a lot of different levels, both to build capacity of the staff we have and to complement it by bringing the staff in. All of the social workers that we're adding will be bilingual. You know, traditionally, one of, you know, one of the, one of the problems that happens in, in city districts is there, there can be language barrier. So there's, you know, they might, a council might be very, very talented and skilled. But if they can't speak the language of the students that they're trying to work with, it doesn't work. So we're really going through a phase right now where we're trying to also increase capacity by moving many of our positions to bilingual positions as well. As well as diversifying and having clinicians of color coming in. So I hope that answers it.
Yeah, no, thank you Superintendent Skipper and Chair Green for insightful response. Thank you.
Councilor White, you there?
I think I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Ms. Skipper, this will probably be the last official conversation that we have. Since I'm no longer going to be in office next year, and I just want to first say that it's been a pleasure. Since I, I was on the panel that, you know, we voted to appoint you superintendent, I've been very impressed with what you've done. And first, we're going to have an inside show when you were interviewing because you are Latin and you had a background in Latin tux. And then I asked you to identify a speech in Latin. So now leaving with a little levity before I get to serious business. I wonder if you can identify my backdrop.
You look like you're in the Pantheon.
Okay, you win. All right. So you, you, you're correct. So the serious question I have is this, is I've always used the demographics for me as a proxy of what's actually going on in our community. And I've always asked questions on the demographics, which is in chat, you know, chat eighteen. So one of the things is enrollment, because I think that's still the ship. Now, when I was first president and served in the school committee in two thousand and two, there were about a thousand students more. So we've seen that, a drop. Now, when I was on the school, serving on the school committee as president, I remember there was a bulge in enrollment way back and the hope or the thought was that it was going to work its way through. And it was a sign, maybe we were going to get, you know, more young, you know, more students starting out with Somerville school system. But looking at the numbers, and I know we can't use last year because of the COVID situation, has it stabilized or have you seen any increase?
Yes, it's a great question through you, President. So we actually were, we were on, and we can provide the chart, we were on an upward trend. What it, what it happened, when I first came in, what we identified was that students would stay with us until about the third grade and then they would leave. Right? And there were numerous reasons for this, housing issues as more kids came into the family. You know, choosing to get kids into a private, you know, private schools or whatever. We saw that actually stop. And it's actually, prior to the pandemic, if we were to add the two fifty back in or the two seventy-five back into the system, you would actually see that it's, it's pretty stable, it's pretty much stabilized across the grades. And so what that's meant is bigger and bigger classes going into Somerville High School. In terms of the pre-K and the K, we always fill our pre-K. You know, it generally is a little bit over the, the three hundred mark. We always fill it. Kindergartens have gotten bigger and bigger, again, pre-pandemic. Where we were up near four thirty, four forty, four fifty for kindergartens, which were very large. Had we kept that trend, now that we had sort of smoothed it out and families were staying and with the school system, we would be seeing lot enrollments, not quite to the thousand that you remember in two thousand and two, but we would have certainly been seeing them much higher than in the past decade. So the question now is going to be, what happens post-pandemic? Do families reengage within? Do more families come back into Somerville? Do the families that are here stabilize? You know, we still have some families that, you know, are, are going to be staying abroad next year. Or they're going to be staying in another part of the state next year and they're saying, can we come back a year after that? We're, we also, I think, are seeing in the kindergarten, in the pre-K, families want to see what, in the fall, they want the guarantee, which we've given, and I think Desi has given that we will be open. But I think because of their need to work, we're seeing, we're not yet seeing that kindergarten fill the way that we wanted to fill. So I think what will happen is come fall, we'll have a much better sense of whether we're going to return to sort of that, that even stability that we had started to see. We had, I mean, when you add the, the two seventy-five back in and you take the smallest graduating class, two seventy-five out of the high school, you backfill it with a fairly, I think around three fifty or three seventy-five of the eighth grade to the, the net difference. You're talking about another about three fifty into the system were not for the pandemic. So you add that back on to our numbers, you get us up to about fifty-one, fifty-two hundred. That's what we were aiming for in our enrollment, which would have been much higher than normal.
Okay, through the president. So the folks leaving after sort of like the third grade, has the trend now stopped based on the last few years?
It has.
Because that was one of the reasons why some folks were concerned about the housing that was being created and whether we had enough bedrooms. Because at least back a few years ago, a lot of folks who might have had, say, you know, two children with three bedrooms or one child with two bedrooms, when they had the additional child and then the second child, say, got to the age where they needed a separate bedroom, there really wasn't housing available in the city. So it's good for me to hear that. Now, the other question I have, and this is just operating through memory. And again, it's just looking at the, the demographic chart that you gave us this year. Has English as a first language as a percentage among our students dropped?
This past year, yes. I mean, we, what we saw was sort of an inverse of the grades in which the students were coming in the year prior. But we were still seeing like we, we build over the year. We did not see that build last year. It just didn't happen. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that with a lot of the changes that have happened federally and post-pandemic, that we start to get our immigrant families coming back and, and having students enroll.
So prior to coronavirus, maybe.
Karen Green, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I just add to that. When we dug down into the enrollment dip this year, to Superintendent's point, I want to emphasize this, a lot of the dip, we seem to have come from that, just that, that we didn't see the same rate of immigrants coming into our district that we do in normal years. And presumably, so our immigrant students who left over the summer, went back to their home countries, we expect to come back, but haven't, weren't here this year. And nationwide, this is a similar thing, like we've seen nationwide, we saw communities of color, immigrant communities pull out of schools at a higher rate than their white counterparts. So some grades, the things we saw in Somerville, actually are less severe. Somerville has done a better job than most, if not all districts in having equity in students who've come back. But those, some of that attrition reflects national patterns in demographics as well.
Follow up to the president. So you did, that was not a, so that was not a trend prior to the coronavirus. So would say the year before and two years before the coronavirus hit us, you were, were you seeing a decrease? And the percentage of students, English was not, you know, the primary language?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. President. So it actually, we, we've had sort of like an up and down pattern happening with our multilingual students. Some years it's high, some years it goes down, some years high, and it varies by the grades. So some years we get a tremendous amount of unaccompanied youth at, at the high school level and our, we have to add sections to the high school. And then other years we get hit in the middle school. We had one year, we were seeing a lot of students with interrupted learning at the middle school at Winter Hill and I had, we had to open another class. And then sometimes we have to open a first grade because we see that. So it really does, it's a very hard pattern to predict. But the pandemic has absolutely skewed it. So, you know, we, we'll, we're going to have to look at this come fall to see if the, the pattern of students coming in over the summer and during the school year holds.
And then one other question, the demographics is, I know in some demographic compilations, they have this percentage of students in the, in the school population economically disadvantaged. And I thought in the past that the school department used like free lunches as a proxy to sort of show how that was going, you know, how that was in, in the school population.
Yes, so through you, Mr. President. And Fran, you can weigh in on this. The, the state changed the way that that information was provided in terms of free and reduced lunch. You had to be directly involved in one of the care systems. In, so, you know, to, to be, you had to be basically be receiving social service of some sort in the state to be able to be qualified and counted as a free and reduced lunch. And so there's been, you know, when, what we do is we still give a paper application so that we're able to at least keep our kind of own internal counts. But it's, it meant, you know, they, they've held harmless on it so far. But there's no guarantee that they're going to continue to hold harmless in, in a, in a, you know, particularly for, for some of our immigrant families, there's a lot of reservation of drawing on any services. And so they in essence just wouldn't be counted. So for a place like us or Revere or New Bedford, that would be a loss of budget dollars and a loss for our families of not getting the services they need. Director Gorski, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that?
No, to the, to the president, I think Superintendent covered it.
Well, again, the last comment that I'll make is this. We've seen a couple of rounds of gentrification, but we have not seen the results of the green line stops actually opening. And the rent increases that those openings are going to cause in areas that right now aren't close to transit. So presumably, a lot of the areas that currently don't have a green line stop, but a year from now there'll be a green line starting business. Their, the rents are probably lower. And now, once those stops open, you're going to have probably a substantial increase in rent in areas where more, you know, working class or immigrant students are living in. So it may be that your demographics, as we go, you know, in the next few years, after So it may be that your demographics, as we go, you know, in the next few years after the opening of the green line. Is going to be very important to show of the elected officials, what's going on and using that maybe as a way to address affordable housing needs and and other concerns of our community so that we can somehow maintain a mixed community in the face of all of those stocks opening and what their impacts are going to be. I very much appreciate, you know, the time. I appreciate your service, Mr. Green. And I again, thank you for, you know, for all of your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor White.
If I may, just before Councilor White goes away, I also just want to give my thanks to him. He was on the school meeting when I first joined and was of immense value to me in learning how this weird beast of a enrollment works. And, you know, just sort of personal note, I just want to thank him for his service, his mentorship of me and look forward to continue to pick his vast brain as he enjoys his retirement.
Thank you very much, Chair Green.
And through you, Mr. President, I'd like to thank you, for Councilor White, for keeping me on my toes for my Latin and Greek history and mythology and architecture.
Councilor Scott. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any trivia questions, but this is the.
That's different from the Pantheon and the Prophet, on Councilor Scott.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to go into executive session for that, Mr. President. So however, I, we don't generally have the school committee come separately before the finance committee, so I did have just a couple of questions if I could ask this evening. One of which is just related to the transportation. I'm very eager to, I'm very excited to see the five hundred thousand dollars in MBTA vouchers. And obviously, transportation to different schools within the district has been a topic of great conversation. Particularly as it pertains to demographics within our our different elementary schools. I guess I was curious as to, because, you know, twelve being cut off there doesn't necessarily address that. What would be the cost of, you know, a citywide busing program or some kind of, you know, city transportation program for those younger children? Busing is what I grew up with, but has that, has that been investigated?
Through you, Mr. President. And Chair Green, you can, you should weigh in on this as well. So I I think the thinking was that we would begin with the enrollment study to be, to start. To be able to see what parts of the city are actively growing, you know, we know from the demand of who puts in for first and second choices, but still doing a study and more of a longitudinal study would be very helpful. To Councilor White's point, something like the green line will also change things dramatically. And then from that comes changes to the assignment process. And it's through the assignment process that you then determine changes in programming, could be ELL, special education, or it could be choice. And were that to happen, then you'd have to look at what does that mean for students and families? So does that mean that we would have to put more busing in place? Currently, we don't bus regular ed students. There are, there is certainly special education busing for those that have it on their individual IEP. There is, you know, our multilingual busing, which happens to the three or four specific schools that have that program. There's also a bus that does come across the city through us that will help with students coming from the west side with unidos. But beyond that, there's no gen ed busing that's taking place. So really, the assignment policy would drive what busing needs are. And then we would have to look at the routing, we would have to look at how many students it is, and then from that would come the cost.
Just to do some busing one on one, for those who may not be aware of how this works, Massachusetts state law requires that schools provide, that districts provide busing in a situation where students live more than two miles away from a school. Obviously, in Somerville, no one in Somerville lives more than two miles away from a school. So we do not, we do not have to bus. This is, on one level, an immense cost saving for the district. To put it in context, Boston spends well over a hundred million dollars a year just on transportation for its students. So not having, so historically not busing has spent more money, as as Director pointed out in his presentation, going into the classroom, which has been something that has historically been a real priority of Somerville. City government's one of the school committees for three years, that as much of money goes into the classroom as possible. However, it does, as you, as you alluded to, Councilor Scott, lead to inequities in the choice program where people's ability to choose a school in a district is limited to a school in a district. And that's, you know, I am willing to admit that, as much as I love the Healy, unless I'm glad my daughter's there. A large factor of it was that it is a school that we can walk to with ease and as things are currently started, those of us who live on the north part of the city, getting digits out, for example, is not marriage. So as we think about things, about how you have, actually have an equitable enrollment policy, and what does that mean for the last student to have choice, this is one of the questions that will come up. Because it becomes very different if we're talking about a program where we would say every student in Somerville is, has a right to a busing to any school in Somerville. Than if we were to move to neighborhood schools or schools on programming. So these are, you know, as I said, I think for school committees perspective, while figuring out how to deal with the inequities of school choice is on our agenda. We want to do it from a place of actually knowing what the actual lay of land is. As the superintendent informed me once, and I was talking, you know, we haven't even looked at the catch areas for for neighborhood preference since, since before the Cummings and the Old Powerhouse School were closed. So there is a fairly large data gap that would need to be filled before we can start coming up with good policy changes. Originally, the plan was to do that this year. Obviously, with COVID, I had almost studied with enough sense, and doing it next year, as we still try to shake out some of the changes, probably doesn't make sense. So you'll probably see school committee perhaps launch it in the spring of next year. But it'll really be a project for the following school year, once you have some degree stability.
All right, and and through you, Mr. President, so that that project that you're launching there is the enrollment study that we're all very eagerly waiting for.
Yes, and one of the challenges in Somerville, it's worth being clear is that makes our enrollment studies different, is that the enrollment studies through the program that, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the acronym here, but the organization that usually does it for the Massachusetts school committees. And the one we did our last one with is limited by their, their model explicitly doesn't include chronic changes in the, in the district as they try to make projections. So, you know, given the vast, you know, changes, the last person to Somerville were shockingly not the best, so we need to do a more comprehensive and different kind of enrollment study than most districts do.
Okay, so I had another question. And and I appreciate that it's basically impossible to know where we're going to be in terms of enrollment next year. But in terms of our current classes, you know, I really appreciated the graph up there of, you know, how many class units we have in each grade, and of course, those are scattered all over the district. But in terms of capacity for adding classes with our current elementary school buildings. How much capacity do we have to add extra units or extra? You know. I apologize for not being on the state of the art of the technology, but if we need to add three third grade classes next year. How much space do we have for that in our existing K through eight facilities?
So through you, Mr. President, so it really depends, it depends on the school counselor. But we're pretty full in terms of the usage of the classes now. If these were the numbers and these were the numbers going forward, then you would have some shrinking happening, right? So you would, you would basically be doing some consolidation in schools, particularly schools with largest numbers of strand classes, and then that in turn would enable you to have space that if you needed to trigger new classes, you could in the future. We're, we're right now saying we're holding and we're going to keep the classes that have been launched active. So that we can just add into them. So right now, we have enough capacity to be able to add more students in just based on the little class size. Where we run into problems are particular school areas like the west side. Where, you know, we have traditionally seen more younger students in the pre K ages. So longer wait lists relative to pre K, but not having room at the Brown or at the West. Kennedy, we did launch a pre K, but we would be hard pressed to launch anything else there to address younger students. So, you know, we are pretty full with space, and I think part of the value of the enrollment study is to figure out whether or not we need to build, look at buildings, look at a different way of perhaps collapsing and creating a middle school in an area of the city. That's what would come out of the enrollment study, looking at that. For next year, we should certainly be fine, and actually, for the year after, we should be fine. But beyond that, if we were to continue to see the enrollment growth we had seen prior pre pandemic, prior, pre of the pandemic. We were, we were in a situation of needing to really take that on quickly.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm, boy, I I love it when you're a step ahead of me because my next question was going to be about conversations about the creation of a middle school. In order to open up capacity and ensure that we continue to have smaller class sizes. But that, I I absolutely understand, we've got to see where things are coming out of the pandemic and with the enrollment study. But it does also put a question in because this year, somewhat famously. There was this odd hot potato of who owns school buildings and who gets to say what happens with school buildings. So has there been any conversation or movement about where control of those school buildings is going to end up? In this year, next year, ever? Is that, is that something that's currently under negotiation? I see President Green is smarting on this one.
So the answer is, it's a conversation we want to have. We haven't had a chance to have it yet, like getting a district online is taking all our staff's capacity. But the school committee has made it clear. And we will continue to make it clear that we feel like a, we want more control over, I don't want to say the wrong word. But it was clear, one lesson we learned this year is that we need more direct oversight of facilities. And what that may look like, I think is a question that will, if I agree to conversation, I don't want to preclude my members, maybe all have different opinions and patients, but yes, that is, our agenda is looking at the future of facilities management for the district.
Yeah, maybe instead of more control, more latitude might be the right, might be a good word.
Yeah, that's a right word is, I'm not sure we, we've even had the point where we discuss what we want, but I think there were definitely. You know, this was a challenging year, and I think, you know, as we figure out ways in which we can make future years less challenging. Figuring out how to make decisions about. And it's not just, you know, obviously, the big thing is food controls of buildings. But it's, you know, there's small things, and this is one of the things that the superintendent put in the budget. Like we have a big new high school, and it is huge. And it is nice, and keeping it huge, keeping it huge, it's going to require a different type of facilities management than personal or other buildings do. So what does that look like? So we've, we've done some staffing upfront, but like, there are some strict questions that need to be answered going forward, absolutely.
All right, well, I can appreciate that, and, you know, I can understand how frustrating it is to be wanting to have a conversation and just not getting to have it. Speaking of which, before I move on, although it's also related to buildings. You know, a lot of advocacy went around the creation of expanded gender neutral facilities, both for bathrooms and for changing at this, you know, brand new state of the art high school that we built for the future. And, you know, I've got to say, the engineering team and the whole building, the whole building team was incredible about being receptive to that input. And putting in the, the calling false walls, building in the opportunity to make a very quick transition to gender neutral facilities. Unfortunately, since, since that happened, since we've got a certificate occupancy for, for a couple of months now, I've been asking for a meeting with the mayor and, and haven't been able to have one. Or even really get any feedback on this. What, how, how do we go about actually making that happen? The capacity is there, the capability is there. How do I, how do I go about helping students and teachers and advocates in the community, including educators at the high school? To push that forward?
Sure, so let me start by saying that I think it's amazing how fast progress is made on some of these issues, and I mean, in the best possible way, right? When the high school was first designed, the fact that we were having gender, any gender, gender neutral facilities was considered progressive and ahead of our time. And in the time since then, we have made great progress from that, and I'm thrilled to say that, and I think Somerville has Somerville Public Schools has historically led the way on a lot of support for LGBTQ students of all sorts, but particularly trans and non-binary students. We have, we were the first, we were the second district to pass a policy, legislation in the country to pass a policy and support facilities by students. I think the first talk about having policies to support non-gender stuff. So I think, you know, our commitment to doing right there is clear. I do think, as, you know, the high school came online in a very unusual way. Their decisions and, you know, some of the I don't say fine tune because that that sounds dismissive in a way that I don't mean it to be. But I think there are some, some changes, like, like with false walls and stuff, that the rush was to get the building applicable as soon as possible. And I'm proud of the fact that our district went from certificate occupancy to actually using the building in two weeks, I think it was, maybe not even. But absolutely, I think over the summer, you're going to see some of, some improvements made to the bathroom facilities. Which will be primarily because of going back to the control issue done by Mr. Raich and DPW, the district's department, DPW. But certainly. You know, going into the ball, you'll see more. I think you'll see us trying to improve signage and some of these things that would have ideally been done before we opened, but in the rush to get things open, didn't happen.
And certainly, you know, there were some building code issues where some of these things that were said to be supported by the district couldn't be done before we had a certificate occupancy, but now we have it and we can do it. But I I continue to be at a loss because everybody I talked to about this seems to indicate that well, you know, it's engineering that has to do the work and it's, you know, the school has to have some policy discussions about it. And the mayor ultimately controls the buildings, and so I'm, I'm having a hard time answering the parents, these, you know, trans and non-binary kids. And and honestly, trans and non-binary kids themselves, when they say, where does the buck stop? And who will actually take a meeting with us on this? So how, what, what, who do I need to talk to?
Well, on behalf of, you know, schools, as you know, we always take a meeting, so like, I'm happy to have that meeting. And I, I think, I think if we were to say, we're going to have that meeting as far as our role, and like I said, I think as far as the actual doing of the work, and the superintendent will fill me in on, perhaps even correcting us on these things.
Yeah, through you, Mr. President. I, I think probably a good step is, once school is out, I think you know, we can gather the students that we had spoken with that came and presented. And sit down and kind of revisit what was wanted. Kind of check, check, you know, the design piece, and then we'll set up a meeting with Mr. Raich to determine, you know, what can be done, what's within code, what can't be done, so that there's at least a communication flow. It's been on my mind as well.
Well, I appreciate that, and just another reason to look forward to some. All right, well, thank you very much. I, I assure you I'll follow up on it. Thank you very much.
Councilor Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. Nice to see you all. So I think most of my questions were asked, the general ones, so I just wanted to hone in on a couple of details for clarification, please. I noticed on the bar graph, when there was a comparison between Somerville and the state that counseling and testing was lumped together. And I was just curious, is that normal measurement? You know, with the way the state measures it, that they put counseling and testing together? And that was the first question, and then I guess I wanted to be clear on what the word testing meant. Was it some testing or evaluation for counseling, or is it testing for like MCAS?
So these are the pre, through you, through you, Mr. President. These are the predetermined buckets that the state gives us.
Okay.
And to be honest, we're not always entirely sure what they put into the buckets, Counsel Valentine. I mean, let me just take a quick look at it. Yeah. So my, my, through you, Chair, through you, President, my guess is, this is, this probably has to do with the, the testing is probably testing that's post-secondary testing of some sort, like SAT allocation, dollars, AP dollars, things like that. The, the difficulty, again, with how things are coded is how they get to these bar charts is how the staffing plan gets coded. So I'll, I'll give you, for instance, when I responded to Counsel Abah, I mentioned deans of students. In our case, deans of students are counselors. They have mental health backgrounds. That's one of the, the criteria for the position. However, it doesn't mean that deans of students in the state model gets translated so that they end up in the bucket for counseling. So it, it, it's just frustrating sometimes. The same thing happens with special education. And, you know, you'll, you'll see sometimes teachers that are teaching inclusion for special education aren't necessarily considered a special ed teacher, but they're providing services. Same thing. They go into regular education as opposed to special education. So it's not a fine science, unfortunately, these buckets. We can do more digging down if you want, but that's, that's in general, just sort of kind of guides.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then on professional development, and I don't have all the information. I was trying to understand, you broke down, you know, for the teachers, but what I didn't quite understand is there any other professional development given to other staff members?
Correct. So we, so we, the 10,000 hours was all inclusive. So that could have been teachers, counselors, paraprofessionals. It could have been non-union. It was, it was everyone. It was 550 educators that it was sort of based on. But again, the role of the educators would have varied. But yes, we do professional development, both at the start of school and then throughout the school year to all the different units. We just customize to what they need. Community schools, for instance, also gets professional development. There, any of the site directors or even part-time staff can, can do it.
Okay, great. And I'm trying to jog my memory from a few years back. Whether there is a goal or a collaboration with Bunker Hill Community College that I thought I remember Chair Norman at the time talking about, you know, the new ed program that would be rolled out when the high school opened up. And that there was a hope that possibly high school students could also graduate with an associate's degree. Did I remember that incorrectly? Or if that is, in fact, are, are we beginning that rollout this year or next year?
Sure. Through you, President. So what you're referring to is the early college models. It expands beyond, like the one I referenced earlier was Cambridge College. It does extend beyond Bunker Hill. We, we were and are in active talks with Bunker Hill on it. Because of the pandemic, everything's sort of been put on hold. But the, the goal is that our students are able to both audit classes at the, the universities that are around us, as well as being able to take them for credit so that they actually can during junior and senior year, be able to work toward their associate's degree. So that'll be something that as soon as Bunker Hill sort of opens back up in that way, we will resume those conversations. The other thing that we did bring up in not last year's budget, but the previous one was 13th year programming. And that was for our students who they, they need an additional year with us so that they're getting some of the supports, particularly college counseling and social emotional supports and, and sometimes academic tutoring and support in order for them to start their college programming. And so they're generally going to our two-year publics. And they're, they're, they're kind of right over that graduation line, but they don't yet fully have all the skills to independently succeed in that way. And so sometimes city districts will form these 13th year programs as, as one, a way to ensure students don't drop out, two, to ensure that students do in fact graduate and have an active goal of post-secondary plan. So that is also something that we had active discussions with Bunker Hill about. The truth is that any student that has that qualifies basically for free and reduced lunch in meet a federal threshold actually gets their courses covered through Pell Grant at the two-year states, in two-year communities. What's not covered tends to be sort of some of these wraparounds, books, sometimes insurance or fees. And so the 13th year is again prime for a student that qualifies for the tuition. But minus that support is not going to be able to succeed, even given the fact that tuition is paid for. So you'll see more to come on both of these things as the colleges start to kind of open up again and are willing to let high school students come onto campus, frankly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments for the school committee? For the schools in general? See no further questions or comments. Thank you, everyone, for attending. This item will refer to the finance committee. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other items before us?
Mr. President, there are no further items before the council this evening.
All right. With no further items before us, Counselor, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to offer a quick comment about scheduling. We, we are going to begin our departmental reviews on Monday. It is anticipated on the ninth that we will have a public hearing that will be a committee of the whole. There's also a committee of the whole scheduled for the evening reviewing the police budget. I do not have at this moment any further committee of the wholes scheduled or anticipated for the process until we get to barring first contact. But if any colleagues do have a request for, for a particular department or evening to be in the committee of the whole, as always, please request that they send that to me as soon as possible. And I'll work with you to try to facilitate everybody's sense of being able to adequately ask questions and review budget. So just wanted to let folks know what to anticipate for scheduling. Thank you.
That all sounds awesome. Counselor Strezko?
Not related to Counselor Scott's comment. I'm happy to follow up with Counselor Scott on that. But also, Mr. President, was hoping that if we had any administration, staff of the administration here to talk about getting a paper, physical copy of the budget. And when we can expect that for any counselors, they may, that may wish for that, including me.
That is actually a great question. Mr. Mastaboni, are you here? Could you answer that question?
President McLaughlin, this is Director Accinello. I'm happy to answer, if that's okay.
Yep, feel free.
Thank you. Through you to Counselor Strezko. I did send an email out earlier today to let everyone know that I spoke with City Clerk John Long. And so if anyone, Mike Mastaboni had made a PDF copy available on the website so that there's a static document. In case anyone didn't want to work off the interactive website, that can be printed. And John Long let me know that he's happy to assist with that. If you just let him know that you would like that to be printed, the PDF should be on the website tomorrow for printing. So if you just sending him, well, John, John is here tonight, so you can hear you. But if you just sent an email to John Long, letting him know that you would like that to be printed, he can help you out.
Mr. Clerk, I would like a paper copy. I'm going to save an email to open. May I please have a paper copy? Can we collaborate as soon as possible? So I may pick that up. Talking tomorrow. That is all. Thank you very much.
Very good. Any further questions or comments? Here none. Counselor Strezko moves to adjourn. Let's call the roll on adjournment.
This is a roll call vote on adjourning the meeting this evening. Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
One second. Counselor Valentine?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezko?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes, please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of adjournment.
All right. Good night, everybody.